It is now seven o'clock, Tuesday, February 24th, 2015. We're in the Sierra Room of the Community Center. It's the time, date, and place for the Carson City School District School Board Meeting. And at this time, we will have everyone stand for the presentation of colors by the Carson High NJ ROTC.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right wheel, march. Color guard, hold.
If not, all in favor?
Thank you, President Swerzick, members of the board. Good evening. Tonight, we have some special guests with us. We'd like to certainly thank our Carson High School NJ ROTC students for being here tonight and presenting the colors. Next, we'd like to turn to the music teacher of Empire Elementary, Ms. Kelly Aaron-Fuechter, and her fourth grade students, who will do a little presentation for us.
And parents, if you want to take pictures of the front of them, you can come up here too, feel free.
What? Okay. We're gonna perform this way. Come this way. Right and down. Very good. Now, we can do two rows, two rows. We need some stands in back. Yep, please share. Yes, we're seeing that here. Very quickly, before we begin, I'd like to thank the school board for having us here tonight. It's great to have music education at the school board meeting for all to see what we do. These students have been working on recorders for about two weeks. We're working on good tone production with nice, warm air and making sure our fingers completely cover the holes, because leaks make squeaks. So, we're going to be starting with Hot Cross Buns and we'll be playing three short selections for you. Are you ready?
Yes.
One, two, three, go. One, two, three, four. Very good, very good. Hot Cross Buns, our next selection is Edie Sleep. It's a nice lullaby. Nice and slow. Very nice. Yes, that's right. Two times. First, first, and last. Our last selection for you is Merrily We Roll Along, also popularly known as Mary Had a Little Lamb. You ready? Two, three. A little faster. One, two, three, go. Great. Yes, that's right. Two times. First, first, and last. Our last selection for you is Merrily We Roll Along, also popularly known as Mary Had a Little Lamb. You ready? Two, three. A little faster. One, two, three, go. That's great. Thank you all. Very nice. The last piece we just started working on last week in class, so I'm so, so proud and so pleased with what they've been able to accomplish in such a short amount of time and can't wait to see them get to their black belt in recorder karate.
Well, Kelly, thank you, thank you very much.
I would also like to give Mrs. Erin-Fuechter some kudos. She came to us in September from Pennsylvania. We hired her over Skype. She was just so bubbly and so exciting, we couldn't pass her up. When she came, she has just lit a spark in our music department, and we are so happy to have her at Empire.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Jason Zona, who's the principal at Pioneer High School. And he will introduce to the board and Mrs. Jill Council and talk a little bit about our Carson Online program and our very special coordinator. Thank you, Mr. Zona, for being here.
I'm trying not to outrun her up here. It's a first. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm Jason Zona, principal at Pioneer High School and in charge of Carson Online. Last month, Pearson and Advance Academics awarded our distance education coordinator, Jill Council, for her success with Carson Online. To give you a little bit of history, in 2009, Carson City School District piloted its first distance education program at Pioneer High School. Carson Online now serves all secondary students at both high schools and both middle schools. Since the start of the online option, CCSD has increased the course offerings by 200 classes for Carson City students. Not only has this opened the world to our students, it has resulted in the completion of honors courses, electives, as well as credit retrieval. Carson Online has also helped dozens of students graduate on time at both Carson and Pioneer High Schools. We keep track of the data that our students do with online work, and the first slide you see up here is a total throughout the years. And since '09-10, you can see that last year, we served 509 students. So, really, when I say "we," it's Jill Council. She has done that. That was last year. 318 were part-time, and full-time were 101. This year, we're already at 402, 311 are part-time, and 91 full-time, and that's without summer. That gives you a little bit of an idea of how big that is by itself, and those are the four sites. Here's a breakdown of where the students are taking courses. 91 of those are full-time students. 146 are at Pioneer. Those are part-time students, so they take classes in a classroom and also online. 128 are at Carson High as part-timers. Eagle Valley is 11, and Carson Middle is 26. Here are the passing rates of all the different sites, so we're very proud of our students. At Carson Middle, they have 90% passing rate. Eagle Valley, 100%. Carson High is at 83%. Pioneer High School is at 87%. And if you combine all the part-timers, it's 90% total, which is unheard of. The district as a total is 94% for full-timers. So, that tells you a little bit about the passing rates. What I did was I asked Pearson, you know, how do we stack up next to the other districts using their product? And so, this last slide right here shows, they were a little secretive on the district names, but we could get states. And so, I have for you right here, Carson City School District, we're at 90% passing. Next to Washington, there's three different districts in Washington using AAI. They're at 87, 85, and 78. Texas at 71, Wisconsin 66, and Arkansas at 52. So, when they compare the different districts using their products, similar sizes, school districts and numbers, this is what, this is how we stack up. So, for this, again, we're here to recognize Jill Council, the achievement of our students. She is largely responsible for the success of this program. So, Jill is kind, persistent, meticulous, motivating, and has to be the ultimate nag, and nagging works. So, basically, congratulations to our students at all four secondary sites and to Jill Council. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. And when he says "I nag," I do nag. That's part of the reason for the success. The other part is from the kids. You know, most of them really want to succeed. Quite a few of them are juniors and seniors who are trying to catch up credit-wise, and, you know, just that persistence and that nagging really does push them where we need them to be. So, thank you.
Any comments from the, first of all, don't go away. Any comments from the board? Questions? Well, I can tell you, I've been over there, I have a granddaughter who took some online courses, and Jill runs it. It's perfect when you walk in. This is, this is not just fun and games. This is pretty serious. So, Jill, thank you very much for your work. It's pretty obvious that you've done a great job in keeping our, giving guidance to our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment as well and give kudos to Jill, because I have a kid who's one of the middle schoolers, and he does one online class through Carson Online. And, you know, he started last year when he was in the fifth grade, and, you know, he's different than the other kids that go in there, and Jill was always just welcoming of him and treating him just like all the other kids and making sure that he was doing the things that he needed to do, along with my nagging. So, I just wanted to state that, because I think it's a really good option, not just for students who might be in credit retrieval, but also students who might be wanting something different in one class or two classes, all throughout the secondary level. And so, I think it's a really great resource, and I'm, you know, as a personal user of it, I support that, having that flexibility, and I think it's a really positive thing for our district, and I know Jill's a big part of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Well, again, Jill, thank you so very much, and Jason, good job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the board, next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Sheila Story, who has been the advisor for Carson High School cheerleading squads this year, and our cheerleaders have achieved some great recognition, and I'd like to have Mrs. Story tell us about that.
President and members of the board, thank you for inviting us here tonight. We have some of our squad here. We have varsity, 12 of our members out of 20, and we have a couple of our JV. I'm gonna allow the girls time to talk to you, introduce themselves, and tell you what success we've had this year.
I'm just gonna introduce some of our cheerleaders that we have. So, we have Kay Dargit.
Oh, excuse me, wait, before you go, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Kelly Camfield, and I'm one of the varsity captains. And we have Alexis Sorario, Christiana Davison, Amber Seifert, Josie Bookinary, Kalen Leese, Jordan Lamro, Ashton Milligan, Maddie Stock, Kailin Kempfus, and Taylor.
I'm Paris Regan, and I'm the other varsity cheer captain. As you can see, we were very successful in California when we competed in UC Davis's competition against many California teams, and we actually took first place, so we're really excited to hang this banner up in our gym now. And then, we also took second in our very first competition, and that was also in California, and we competed in about like six different huge, I'm talking like amazing teams, and that was awesome for us to get second place. We also have been very successful in our competitions, so we got asked to go to Nationals in Anaheim, California. So, here we go. And that's next month, and we have been fundraising like crazy. We have this weekend our center at camp, so if you have any little guys, they're willing to cheer with us possibly at Mr. Carson High, which is next week on Friday. And we also have teamed up with Greater Nevada Credit Union, who said that they're gonna match up every $500 that we raise, so if anyone's willing to possibly sponsor us and help us out, we are working really hard to get to Nationals and possibly place there. So, thank you.
Okay, again, tell us where we can make these contributions?
What was that?
Where? Where do we contribute to your fund?
Well, if you come to the center at camp, obviously, just, but, like, with these? Are you talking about these? Basically, we have them, our parents have them, and we have them when we walk around, or we can just hand them out to you. It's all around the school, and once someone fills out and makes a donation, then we'll hang them up around our school, and everyone can see that Carson, like, that everyone who's helping us out. But really, we have them, and if anyone asks us...
Do you have any tonight, where you could just...
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a lot. Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure what you were asking, and I was like, yeah, of course we have it.
So, you'll leave them with us. Going to Nationals, and it's in Anaheim, I mean, this is pretty big. So, we got, you got teams coming from all over the country, then?
Yes, sir. Yep.
So, you feel pretty confident?
I'm actually really proud of our team. I mean, it's been a really long season. We've been going since June. We've been conditioning like crazy, and so, we're very prepared for this huge responsibility to take on, and we're gonna make you guys very proud there, so, yeah.
Well, you already have made us proud.
Even more proud.
Anyone else like to just say a few words?
Oh, I would like to bring up our JV captain, Kay Dargit. She, her team took first place at the Sparks competition.
So, I'm Kay Dargit, one of the JV captains, and at our first competition in California, my team took home first place in JV show cheer, and at our last competition in Sparks, we took home first place against four other teams from Northern Nevada. And that was really amazing for us, because we didn't really think we were gonna get that far, but we got first against some really good teams, so that's exciting. And also, our all-girl stunt pod took home third place in, against six teams, so I'm really proud of us for achieving that.
Well, congratulations. That's great. Now, the JVs, do you go on, or is your, are you finished for the year?
JV is pretty much done, but me and two other girls are alternates for varsity to go to Nationals in Anaheim at Disneyland, so we'll be traveling with them to Nationals.
Great. And is Sheila Story still around? I can't see her. Now, explain your role in this. Are you, are you the coach?
Both my daughter and I are coaches. I'm kind of the advisor. I kind of do all the paperwork, I do all the organization, I help out with the parents in our booster club and getting everything organized for fundraisers and stuff like Mr. Carson High. I also check the grades. We make sure there's any discipline issues, that type of thing, and then I'm also there for the first aid issues and the conditioning, that type of thing. Truly, my daughter, Michaela, who's a UNR cheerleader and a UCA cheerleader and a All-Star cheer coach, helps coach these girls, so it's actually her knowledge base and education and understanding and experience as a cheerleader and a gymnast that helps bring these girls to this type of level.
Well, it's pretty amazing, pretty fantastic. I think it's great. Any comments from the board? Well, just congratulations again, and we'll be rooting for you in Anaheim.
Thank you very much.
All right, good. Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, members of the board, we have Lieutenant Commander Dan Meyer, who will introduce members of the NJ ROTC marksmanship team, and they are here, having recently competed and earned the championship level for the state air rifle competition.
I'm a little taller. Mr. President, members of the board, first thing, thanks for allowing us to present colors this evening. I'd like you to take note that the cadets that presented this evening, this is their first year doing color guard, so for them to come in front of a group, being nervous and doing a good job, I thought that was a great job of how they displayed. I would also like to introduce our battalion commander, Cadet Ashley Lyford McGowan. I took her first name away, it's really, it's Commander, but I'd like to introduce her, and she can introduce the rifle team, and she can explain their accomplishments.
Bring it back down, too. This is one of our other instructors. We have two brand-new, amazing instructors this year, so this is Chief Ingram and Lieutenant Commander Meyer, and...
Excuse me, would you just identify yourself again?
I am Cadet Commander Ashley Lyford McGowan. I am, right now, in charge of 236 cadets who are enrolled in our program at Carson High School. And out of those 236, we have seven outstanding cadets here who brought home state championship for rifle team. If you would please stand up. And I'm actually gonna let them introduce themselves with their ranks, so that you can get that. So, one by one.
Can I, before you start? I see a mom against the wall. You're welcome to come up here and get a better picture.
Thank you.
They're a little nervous.
I am Semin apprentice cadet Joey Lo Presti, and, yeah.
I'm Cadet Ensign Josiah Seer.
I'm Cadet Semin apprentice Brown.
I'm Cadet Senior Chief Penya.
I'm Cadet Petty Officer Second Class White.
I'm Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Raul.
And there's one more member of this team who could not make it tonight, and he's actually the commander of the rifle team, and that would be Gage Bobbitt. So, he deserves much credit for all of this work. Just really quick, I wanted to note that we have three juniors, two sophomores, one freshman, and Bobbitt is a senior, so it's made up of all different grade levels.
Could you tell us about the trophies? What happened here?
Well, first off, I'd like to acknowledge Cadet White, because he actually earned a trophy all on his own, and he won the Top Gun Award, so I'll let him tell you a little bit about that.
So, like the commander mentioned, this is the Top Gun Trophy. I earned this trophy in a shoot-off at our state match. It was against the top eight shooters out of roughly 66 varsity shooters in the state, and the shoot-off came down to one position. The top eight all shot together, and then the final scores came out, and I had shot the highest in that position, and then, in turn, putting me at the highest position overall.
Wow, congratulations. That's pretty special. Now, you're a junior?
Sophomore.
Sophomore. Okay, even as a sophomore, do you have plans in going further in this, the ROTC, or onto college, or...
I plan to stay in this program until my senior year, and then, after that, graduate, and then hopefully move on to med school and work towards a doctor in psychiatry.
Great.
Up next, I'm gonna invite Penya to come up and discuss about the main overall first-place trophy, and he is our team's XO, which is executive officer, so he does all the work and does everything when Bobbitt can't make it. So, he's gonna tell you a little bit about shooting, the positions we shoot, and how state was for him.
Hi. What?
So, like the commander mentioned, this is the Top Gun Trophy. I earned this trophy in a shoot-off at our state match. It was against the top eight shooters out of roughly 66 varsity shooters in the state. And the shoot-off came down to one position. The top eight all shot together and then the final scores came out and I had shot the highest in that position and then in turn putting me at the highest position overall.
Wow. Congratulations. That's, that's pretty special. Now, you're a junior?
Sophomore.
Sophomore. Okay. Even as a sophomore, do you have plans in going further in this, the ROTC or onto college?
I plan to stay in this program until my senior year and then after that graduate and then hopefully move on to med school and work towards a doctorate in psychiatry.
Great.
Up next, I'm going to invite Penya to come up and discuss about the main overall first-place trophy. And he is our team's XO, which is Executive Officer. So, he does all the work and does everything when Bobbitt can't make it. So, he's going to tell you a little bit about shooting, the positions we shoot and how state was for him.
Hi. What? Yeah, I got it. Yes, sir, I have it. I am Cadet Penya and this trophy is for the first overall team out of, I believe, 11 teams. We had actually had for our entire, almost our entire team, we had been in the top eight. So, it helped for taking first and yeah, I don't know what else to say, sir. I'm a man of very few words.
So, what are your plans then going forward?
I plan on staying in this program until I graduate and I plan on enlisting in the Marine Corps. Yes.
Be real careful when you get into the Marine Corps that you say Sergeant, sir. You will pay the price dearly if you don't.
So, that's just a little bit about one of our many teams and competitions that we compete in, in ROTC.
Well, let's find out something about you. Now, you, you say you, you're the leader of 216?
Yes, sir.
What are your plans going forward?
I am three years ahead in becoming an American Sign Language Interpreter. So, I plan on finishing that degree here at WNC in one year and then I will be transferring to Embry-Riddle in Prescott, Arizona, hopefully on either an Air Force or Marine Corps scholarship.
Good for you. Any comments from the board?
It's really impressive. Just the way you, you guys hold yourself, the way you speak, it's evident with your plans why you're champions. Don't ever forget that. Keep that attitude and move forward in life with it and you'll accomplish anything you want.
Thank you very much.
Well, again, thank you. Good luck. You made us all proud.
Thank you again for letting us come and present our program to you guys.
Thank you.
Just real quick about the, about the league. The trophy they're holding is the Northern Nevada State Championship Trophy. So, we're, we're in a league. We, it's just like football. It's, it's a sport. As you know, it's an Olympic sport and you can earn scholarships in this if you shoot well. UNR, as a matter of fact, has a team and I'd like to see some of these cadets move on and possibly shoot for UNR. So, we go through a league. We shoot twice a week, one home, one away. A lot of people have commented our range. They like our range. It's a nice, great range. It's the largest range in, of all the schools that have a program. But we go through a process, you know, it's kind of like bowling. Shooting is like bowling. You have your own score. You, you want your highest score, but at the same time, it's a team score. It's also like watching grass grow if you're, if you're observing because it's just boring. It is, unless you're a coach. And I really enjoy and had a great time this year with these cadets behind me shooting. They're professional. They improved and I, I expect them to take this trophy for their next three or four years because we have cadets like Cadet Brown, our freshman, who is doing well right now. She'll be on varsity, I'm sure, next year. So, again, it's, it's, not many people know that we shoot in competitions like this and it's, it's fun and it's just one of the many things that we do. So...
I meant to ask before, when you say you shoot, what's the distance and types of targets you shoot?
10 meters and we shoot a, a competition 10, 10 target, if you will, at 10 meters slash 30 feet. And it's a air rifle. And there's restrictions, you know, you can't have super powerful rifles, you know, there's certain requirements you have to follow. We have a rulebook, national rulebook we follow.
Ms. Meyer, it sounds like you're having a good, good time here then.
I'm, I'm loving it here. This, this place is great. I, I was just talking to the president of the board earlier. I came from a couple of different schools and I haven't been in a school district that I feel welcomed at, comfortable. I've, I've mentioned that to chief and I probably should give him an opportunity to talk because I love talking and I cut him off all the time. But this is a great school district. I'm impressed. I'm glad I'm here. So, yes, sir. It's fun.
Just, just stay here then.
Yes, sir.
Can I say one thing?
We'll be here all night.
No. I don't like to talk as much as he does, but I do like to talk. Just, just one thing I want to throw out there is most of the time, high school students have 20-hour a week jobs and they're trying to focus on making money and keeping up with their schoolwork. These guys shoot at least 20 hours a week between practice and competitions. They spend a lot of time on it and I'm glad to see them holding trophies and being proud of it. So, just one thing I wanted to throw out so you can kind of get an idea.
I can see you're a terrific leader. So, thank all of you then for what you've done.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have just a few other items. I do want to say though, it's great being around our young people and observing their skills and feeling of their energy and their enthusiasm. So, we, we all are proud of you and wish you continued success. Just like to remind our trustees and those who might be watching our meeting this evening, Bandorama is scheduled for Thursday, February the 26th and we will begin at 6:00 PM, if you're able to make it, in Penny Reynolds's restaurant room. And at 7:00 o'clock is when we'll actually be able to go and attend Bandorama. It's always a great event. High school proficiency testing will begin on the 10th, let's see, for 10th and 12th grade students at Carson High School. I don't believe that's right. Is it 10th grade students? So, it should be 11th and 12th. Okay. So, those, those two grades are still impacted by the high school proficiency test. And so, that will be at both Carson High School and also Pioneer High School.
Richard, sorry, what was the date on that again?
That begins on March the 2nd through the 6th. I probably stole some of Jake's thunder. Sorry. Okay. Late start days for students at Carson High School and Pioneer High School are March 2nd through the 5th and classes will begin at 10:30 AM for Carson High School students. Pioneer High School students will have their late start day beginning at...
12:05.
Okay, 12:05. So, tests, students who are testing report at 20 minutes to 8:00. Okay. Sorry about that. I also like to announce that kindergarten registration begins on Monday, March the 2nd from 9:00 until 3:00 each day. And in order to register your student, you'll need birth certificate and immunization records. Student must be five years of age on or before September the 30th and will also need to show some sort of proof of residency in our school district. Pre-kindergarten classes are going to be offered at Borderwick Bray, Empire and Mark Twain Elementary. Please contact your neighborhood school if you'd like an enrollment packet or any additional information. Also like to make you aware of the fact that we go back to daylight savings time on March the 8th, so set your clocks ahead one hour. And the annual STEM night will be at Eagle Valley Middle School and that's March the 5th. And the times for that event, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. You can also contact Mrs. Stocky Coop at Eagle Valley Middle School if you would like more information. And finally, on the 7th of March, that's on a Saturday, there'll be a free event, Carson City's First Annual Early Childhood Expo, starting at 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada. And there'll be a lot of information there for parents who want to learn about the community services that are available for our young children, young people here in Carson City. And, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Richard. Going on to agenda item number four, board reports, board member comments, and we'll start with Jake.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse my voice. I'm a little sick now. The sickness has got me. We would like to start off by saying congratulations to our boys' basketball team. They made it to the regional championship game that was played last Saturday. They did get beat, but it was, they gave it a valiant effort. They put their heart and soul into everything and we are very proud of them. Spring, spring sports have begun, practices have begun on Monday or yesterday. Tomorrow, the 25th, is Skiing State. We have a few members competing, so good luck to them. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM is AP and Honors Night in the library. All parents and students that are interested in taking AP classes and honors courses can come and get feedback on the classes from students and teachers. It's a very informative event, so if you have any questions, please attend. Thursday, the 26th, class elections are this week, so the speeches are at lunch. Voting ends Friday. At 7:00 PM, Bandorama is in the big gym, as Mr. Stokes said. Monday through Thursday next week, March 2nd through 5th, late starts and proficiency testing. March 4th is a choir performance here at the Community Center. It starts at 7:00 PM. Thursday, March 5th, is the first boys varsity baseball game against Truckee at 3:30 PM at Carson High. And Friday, March 6th, at 2:00 PM, is the first swimming meet at the Carson City Aquatic Center across the street. And at 7:00 PM, you can come watch about 22 or three high school seniors make complete fools of themselves, including myself, at the Community Center for Mr. Carson High. Tickets are $10 and it's definitely worth it for a night filled with laughter and lots of other things that are somewhat questionable. It's the cheerleaders fundraiser for their trip to Nationals and the theme this year is going to be Hollywood. Saturday, March 7th, we have varsity baseball and varsity softball at home, starting at 11:00 AM. And there's also a game at 1:00 and 4:00 PM. Tuesday, March 10th, is varsity baseball at home against HUG, 3:45. CHS, we got a new Spirit Week approved. It's called Spring Play. We have not had one for many years now and that's going to be held Friday, March 13th to Friday, March 20th. The week's going to start out on Friday, the 13th with a FBLA Blue Jeans for Babies Dance, I believe it's called. It's a Sadie Hawkins Dance and all proceeds are going to benefit a charity that I need to find out more information about. We have another meeting between then, so I'll have more information for you guys. We're still planning the events, but tentatively, we have planned a Super Smash Bros. Tournament, female flag football and a Stack the Auditorium for Pippin on the 20th, which is the opening night of our CHS drama production. We're going to have a guest speaker, Mike Smith. He's a very motivational speaker, great message, great story. And then also the Sadie Hawkins Dance, the FBLA Dance is the Sadie Hawkins Dance. And then finally, we have elected our new student body school board representative, Kaylee Lambert. She is not in attendance tonight, but she will be here for the next couple of meetings until she takes over my position. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jake.
After two years, are you tired of us or what? We didn't have one until you, so. I have announcements for Pioneer High School. There is a ski day tomorrow at Mount Rose through the Project Discovery Program. On Friday, February 27th, students will go for a day of indoor climbing at the Rock Sport Arena. Next week, March 2nd to March 5th is proficiency testing. Students need to be checked, need to check for their specific schedules. The students of Pioneer High School would also like to thank Mr. Bill Holden for all his many years of service and his commitment to the students of Pioneer High School and wish him well and his best and his very best in his retirement. A reminder too, for all seniors at this time is running out to submit your cap and gown orders for graduation. Thank you. That concludes Pioneer High. Moving on to Empire, next week, March 2nd through 6th is Reading Week. A variety of guest readers will be entertaining the students with great books. March 5th is Family Literacy Night from 6:00 to 7:30. Saturday, March 7th, is Early Childhood Expo at the Boys and Girls Club on Russell Way, as Mr. Stokes told us. March 16th through 27th is the school's Cookie Dough fundraiser. And March 13th is Beach Hawaiian Dress-Up Day. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Steve? Dionne?
I have a few announcements from Fremont Elementary. They had their Technology Night, which was really well-attended and they were able to introduce a lot of their families to the new technology that's coming down for the elementary and demo the S Back and Google Drive and Edmodo, all our favorites. They also have, they actually have about three PTA events in the planning, movie night, a reading week and a bingo for books, but they haven't finalized anything yet. So, I don't have any specifics, but I should next, next time. And they are going to start their MAP testing the, the first week in, the first week in March. So, they'll be doing that. Excuse me. I also have one other announcement about a new kind of parent group that's been meeting and it's the Gate Parent Council. And last, the, the meetings have been going on the 3rd, about the 3rd Wednesday of the month for the last several months. And in the last meeting, there were probably about 20 parents there, so it was a really great turnout. And Holly Young, who's the consultant for the district, gave a presentation on different issues and gifted education. And one of the thing that parents have talked about over the course of the meetings is preparing in the fall to do a gate, some type of a strategic plan for the gate program that's separate, you know, that's building off the strategic plan. So, I just, I'm going to keep announcing this every time because I've been going to the meetings and, and it's really the goal to get more parents there and to get the parents involved and kind of be running the program. And they have a similar model in Washoe, that a, a large parent group. And I think next time, there's going to be more staff there and I think they're inviting the principals to come. And so, it'd be really nice to get the parents that are interested, that want to work on these issues and people that hopefully would want to take a leadership role in, in some of these things. So, I just think I'll, I'll start announcing it every time. That's it.
Yeah. So, when's the next meeting?
The 18th of March at 6:30 in the Carson Middle School Library.
Borderwick, they said the Bingo and Chili Night was a success. They had a great turnout and nobody went away hungry. They're going to be doing the Jump Rope for Heart Assembly on February 25th. The All-Pro Dads Breakfast will be Friday, March 6th at 7:30 in the morning. I was able to serve to the last one they had and it was a neat experience. There was a whole, whole bunch of dads and grandparents and uncles go and they, they, number one, have breakfast with their children. And then also, there's a informational and fun and games that happens at the same time. And then also, Borderwick, right now, the Spring Enrichment Program is in full swing and I was able to attend that today. And that was a, that was a fun experience, the, the PTA, PTO, whatever there. They, they put on these enrichment courses that take place on Thursday, Tuesdays and Thursdays for like six weeks, I think it is, or something like that, eight weeks. And the students like, I sat in on three different sessions today. One was sewing and helping kids sew and they had a drama one, a dance one. And those are special people to give their time, to spend time with second graders and teach them how to sew and everything else. All right. And then at Mark Twain, the 4th grade will be starting NAEP testing next week. That's the National Assessment of Educational Progress or the Nation's Report Card, as I'm learning. They'll have MAP testing, it sounds like probably all schools, starting in a few weeks. Second graders just had their annual music program. They wanted to announce Bandorama, which I think everybody could announce. And then Mark Twain is selling Aces Baseball vouchers as a fundraiser for their PTO. So, if anybody's interested in going to an Aces game, go to Mark Twain and purchase your tickets or your vouchers for them. And then also, at Mark Twain, I was able to sit in on a PLC. I don't know if any of you guys have ever done that, but it was really not a community one, a teacher one, a grade-level PLC. And it was really, it was, it was a really neat experience and, and the most impressive part was people's ability to multitask. They, this was, they covered more stuff in, in 40 minutes than any meeting I've ever been in. It's nothing like the fire department world. And so, it was really impressive and I, I'd just like to thank them for allowing me to sit in on that.
Okay. Laurel?
Thanks. And Ryan, I was just going to shout it out there for the All-Pro Dads. I know that that is Christine Malone on the PTA at Borderwick, who's been doing that for the last two years and she's just a phenomenal parent volunteer. She was recognized by Nevada PTA last year for the Male Engagement Award. She was recognized by Nevada PTA last year for the Male Engagement Award for running the All-State All-Pro Dads. She, she cooks all the food. She does a wonderful job. So for Fritsch, next week is also Reading Week. On March 2nd, Monday, at 6:00 PM in the library, the PTA is having a meeting. On Tuesday, March 3rd, at 5:30 in the multipurpose room, it's Family Pizza Night and the Book Fair. So the PTA is providing pizza dinner. On Thursday, Mrs. Gary has invited all the trustees, who are able to come in at any time to be celebrity readers. Just call Fritsch and let him know when you can come by. And also, Dottie Merrill from NASB mentioned that Monday is Read Across America. So if you go into any of the schools next week and do that reading, take a picture of yourself and email it to Dottie, because then she'll put it together for that. And also, Friday, March 6th, at 7:30 AM, is the Hot Bon Pop Breakfast. This is the breakfast where children are invited to bring their pops, whether that's their dad, or grandfather, or uncle, and come and try green eggs and ham. They can eat them in a school. And also, I'd like to report on the Northern Zone, or, yeah, I think it's the Northern Nevada Zone Music Educators Association. It's a, I can't pronounce their acronym there. But the Honor Choir Concert was February 13th out in Fallon, and both Eagle Valley Middle School and Carson Middle School were well-represented. And in the final number, the, the middle school choirs combined with the high school honor choir, and Spencer Bean from Carson High School was the lead singer. I don't think it was a solo, because he was singing, and they were singing the backup, so I'm going to call him the lead singer of that. But he did a phenomenal job, so I wanted to congratulate him. And also, from NASB, just, Renee sent an email out, but the next 24-hour board member orientation will be April 10th and 11th, and they are limiting the registration to 60 people to make sure the room doesn't, at the Hyatt, doesn't get too crowded. So if you are planning on attending, please let Renee know, so you can register for that.
Thanks, Laura. Joe?
Just a couple of quick comments. Carson Middle School, they begin their student-led conferences tomorrow, I think, 6th graders. I don't have the exact time. The kids all send home letters, though, to the parents, and those begin tomorrow with 7th and 8th graders, I understand, following next week.
6th and 7th are tomorrow.
6th and 7th are tomorrow, 8th grade's next week. Okay. I got this information from a 6th grader and an 8th grader, so. And nothing against them, I'm the one who got it wrong. And then this, the Engineering Society I belong to, every year, we put on a West Point Bridge competition, and the high school, local high schools and middle schools get involved. And this year, again, where Eagle Valley's already committed to participate, and Carson Middle School and Carson High School are just waiting for me to get them some information. But it's a neat program to introduce kids to engineering through a computer-based bridge design contest. And it's all done outside of school, so when we talk about kids who have all their extracurricular activities, this is yet another one they get to participate in, but it, it always comes in high regards, and the kids seem to enjoy it. Carson High School, just two quick things. The Marines, Sergeant Torona is going to be on campus Friday this week during lunch at the library from 10:50 to 11:30. So anybody interested in learning about the military, and specifically the Marines, they're encouraging you to attend. And I just wanted to give a little shout, if you will, to the Carson High track team. This is preseason. In fact, they just started their official season Saturday, but kids who have been interested have been doing a volunteer training session prior to the season, and they've been meeting, you know, as much as they wanted to, but we've offered something to them six days a week, and they show up and train, and they all went down to Grant High School and participated in their track meet down there, and already, before the season started, some of these kids have set personal records for themselves. So it should be an exciting season. We have some pretty amazing athletes. And on that same note, I took my daughter to see McFarland USA, and it, it's dedicated to cross-country, but what an inspirational movie for any kids who are athletes. Fantastic movie. I mean, it's amazing what, it's a true story and what kids can do if they set their minds to it. Anyway, last item I had, unrelated to any of the schools, groundbreaking for the new multi-athletic center, Gymnasium is happening this Thursday, the 26th. And the ceremony will begin at 8:30 AM with the groundbreaking by the Carson City Board of Supervisors. So for those that aren't aware of this, there's going to be a new multi-athletic center here in Carson City. That's going to offer basketball, a raised indoor track, and, you know, a variety of recreational activities for the community, and I'm, I'm sure the school district will, you know, I have a feeling there'll be some kind of joint use going on for this thing. So it's kind of exciting stuff going on.
Thanks, Joe. Real quickly, I'll just go from the Mac to what Lee Connolly sent me from Eagle Valley Middle School. He wanted me to make this a special announcement. Says the Eagle Valley Middle School staff beat the 8th grade girls in the annual Eagle Valley Middle School Staff versus 8th grade girls volleyball game, two games to one. He says this is four years in a row for the staff. So he wanted to make this, this is important.
Is it a co-ed staff team?
So. Thank goodness, right? Okay. And again, real quickly, March 5th, you know, next week, the STEAM night, just, just, I, I hope all of us get a chance to go to it. This is something special that Lisa Saki-Coop puts on. And one last quick announcement, the Carson City School District Foundation launch, you know, last week was very successful. And just to let all the board members know, there's a follow-up meeting tomorrow on next steps. So the director of the, or the chair of the foundation is not letting anything rest. You know, there's a lot of next steps going. So anyway, just, just to let you know that. Well, it's, it's a telephone conference meeting, is what it is. So I just want to let you guys know that things, things are moving very quickly.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to...
We'll go on to association reports? Nothing? Okay. Agenda item number six, that's, that's a public comment, and that's comments by member of the public for, for anything that is not on the agenda, and if you'd like to come forward and, and speak on any item, just come on up. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. President, member of the board. I just have to mention this because I'm the vice pres, uh, vice president for the PTO at Eagle Valley Middle School. Eagle Valley Middle School will be having a bingo night. It's a family bingo night, just to bring all the families in. There's, there's no cost. We're going to be serving chili dogs, having a bingo night, so we'll give the free, one free bingo ticket. If you want more, it's a dollar, and, but we're not looking to raise any money, it's just to bring all the families in together. The other thing I wanted to say is, we are also having an Aces Night on April 24th. It's a Friday night, so we'll be having the fireworks and everything, so that's a fundraiser for Eagle Valley Middle School, so. Thank you.
Okay, going on to agenda item number seven. It's a discussion on possible actions to approve Mrs. Michelle Peterson, parent representatives to serve on the Student Attendance Review Board. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In some of my updates to you, in my, my weekly contacts, I've let you know that I've been working on a project, which is a Student Attendance Review Board, and this process is intended to be a, an opportunity for due process for students and families who have struggled with attendance. The, the makeup of the board is identified through statute, and I have been able to arrange for most of the members of this board, and one of the members that yet needs to be installed in this board is a parent representative. And the parent representative, per the statute, must have students in our school district. And I, I checked with different principals in our school district and asked for them to suggest an individual. And from Mark Twain Elementary, Mrs. Michelle Peterson, Michelle, if you'd come forward, please, is someone that I have interacted with over time and had made her acquaintance and have met some of her children. And I thought that she might be a great individual to really support this endeavor. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce Michelle to the board and give her an opportunity to talk to you a little bit briefly about her interest in school and school activities, and for you to ask her a few questions, because really, Michelle's placement on the board is your decision, and the statute requires that our parent person be placed in this position by a vote of the trustees. And so I bring Michelle Peterson to you tonight as an individual that I think can very capably fill that slot. And so, Michelle, thank you for being here.
Michelle, welcome.
I was told I would smile and wave. There was no mention of a microphone. I'm Michelle Peterson. I've got four kids. They're 5'7", 9'11". My oldest is in his first year at Carson Middle. The rest of my bunch were in year number eight at Mark Twain with five more to go. So we'll be here a while, and then eventually, I'll have some in all three schools, and we'll be working our way through. I don't know, a little about me, I'm like the habitual parent, like, always parent volunteer for anything and everything. I don't dedicate myself to a class, but like, when stuff needs to get done at the school, it's always, hey, Ms. Peterson, I help with anything and everything, from little projects for one person to big projects for the whole school. I'm also, for Carson City Little League, I'm the vice president over there, and the registrar, and the information officer. I don't know what else to tell you.
Yeah, are you looking forward to serving on this, on this committee?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I don't know. I, I think it'll be an interesting opportunity, because I, I'm lucky enough that we don't have much habitual truancy in my family. My husband's a firefighter, so he's gone a lot, and so there's a lot of mom getting everybody ready, and, and so we go through kind of phases of, of like sprinting down the hall, because the tardy bell's about to ring kind of thing, but, but thankfully, I think we avoid too much of that. But I think because of as much as I, I get to live part-time as, as a co-parent and part-time as a single parent, I've got kids going lots of different directions, so I think I have decent perspective on, on some reasons why people might have difficulty getting their kids to school. And so I look forward to kind of being a voice of reason, and like, the advocate for the family side of it, but also, I was kind of joking with Ruth Lee, that, that I can give you a pounding, and you're going to hug me afterwards, because I have that kind of attitude, too. So I don't know. I look forward to it. I think it'll be interesting to, to be a part of the process and be firm, but encouraging, and help however it's needed.
Well, thank you for stepping forward. Any, any questions? Steve?
I'm glad you brought up the, how your kid's attendance record is. That was going to be my first question.
Hey, I have no absences this year yet, and no tardies, though.
Actually, I did want to ask, you've looked at the requirements, I guess, what might be required of this, this kind of a new board, and do you feel comfortable that you could issue or be part of a body that issued citations, or took away a driver's license, or, you know, actually caused a certain amount of discomfort, perhaps, to a family who has a, a student that doesn't want to attend school?
Yes, I think so. I think it's important that, like you were saying, that it's not just a blanket, like, you do this, you get this, but that there's the due process, that there's the conversation that if we take away the 16-year-old's driver's license, and now the little kids can't get to school, that's a big deal for the family. That's a hardship, and to discuss case by case, things like that, but there comes a point, education is number one. If you don't get your kids in school, if you don't help them realize that that's important, kids that don't think school's a priority, work doesn't become a priority, and being a responsible contributing adult doesn't become a responsibility, and then the cycle just goes and goes. And so somewhere along the line, you do got to kind of kick against the pricks and be the bad guy and advocate, I don't know, with a firm hand, get things done. Hopefully ruffle feathers, but nothing changes if you don't, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm glad to see people getting involved in this. I think attendance is important. I've never been a big advocate of 100% attendance. If you're sick, I'd like to see you go home, but at the same time, I think we need people to kind of keep everybody on the straight and narrow and, and get these kids to realize the importance, you know, you can't succeed if you're not there. And so I'm glad to see volunteers and the, and the district attorney's office and everybody stepping up to, you know, to, to make this happen. My question was maybe to, to Richard. What, generally speaking, when do students start getting in trouble with, you know, what's a certain number of tardies that are too many, and a certain number of absences, to where we're starting to get concerned?
Well, and, and of course, each individual case is different. For young children who can't get themselves to school, it's generally not their fault if they're not at school. Sometimes that belongs in a different realm. But we give absentee letters at 10 absences, which seems like quite a bit, and actually, at the high school level, that's the time when students will actually start losing credit for their schooling. So our deans and vice principals are on the phone earlier than that to get in touch with family members and students, and of course, they try to follow up and make sure that they're not cutting class or leaving school without the proper authority to do so. And we've seen students who miss upwards of 60 days in a semester, and it's just way too many. And our principals are constantly asking for some assistance, how can we deal with some of these habitually absent students? And this mechanism is actually endorsed through the statute to help us do this. And so we appreciate the willingness of our partners in the community who are from public agencies, and, and parents like Michelle, who are willing to give their time and their expertise to come and give us a hand. And so we hope it has a positive outcome. I mean, we just want the kids to come to school, and we hope that that really is the end result.
Laura?
I was just going to say that I know Michelle, and I know her to be a very dedicated parent and parent volunteer, and very fair-minded. I, I just, I'm glad we've got your foot in the door, because now we won't let go of you. And I, I just, I'm grateful for this, and I, I would move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve Mrs. Michelle Peterson as the parent representative to serve on the Student Attendance Review Board.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any comment from the, the audience?
Any comment? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Post?
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this, Mr. Stokes, if I may direct a question to you. Remind, remind me, did the state prescribe at what number of absences, or whatever, a student would come under consideration of review by the SARB? That would be up to you to...
That would be, that would be really up to the school. However, at the secondary level, like Carson High School, Pioneer High School, they've got a number of absences associated with when a student would start to lose credit, and so obviously, we would, we would want to catch that early enough so that that student's not behind the eight ball.
Now, is this committee in effect now, or is it for the coming school year?
It's not in effect yet, but it will be very shortly.
Moving on to agenda item number eight, discussion on possible action on proposed Carson City School District calendar for the 2015-16 school year, and this is for possible action. Susan Kima?
Susan Kima, for the record. Before you is the proposed district calendar for the 2015-16 school year. The cal, the school, the proposed start date, August 17th, reflects the annual third week in August that we've been starting school for our district. The final day of school would be Friday, May 27th. What's different in this calendar than in years past, there are a couple of things. First of all, the elementary schools will be joining secondary schools and participating on early release days for next year. The next date, August, or October 16th, that is a, that is a date that we haven't had on the calendar for, before. It's called the Family Health Day. We have a big, there's a special event that would be going on in Carson City, and I'm going to talk about it. Mr. Stokes, did you want to talk about it? We want to explain a little bit about why we're taking... you want to talk about it? We want to explain a little bit about why we're taking that day off.
Thank you, Mrs. Kima. Probably in June, I received a call from Kathy Bartosz, who let me know of an event that occurred several years ago in Reno at Hoga High School, and it's called RAM, which is an acronym for Remote Area Medical Day. And this is actually quite a large, well-known organization. And the whole idea is they use a public building like a school, and they need a fairly large place for an area or for the number of people that they've served in the past, and projecting that forward to the people that they're expecting for this event. And this organization contacts optometrists, dentists, and doctors, and asks these medical professionals to come and provide their services without charge for a weekend. And so, they bring a lot of people to town, and then individuals who are underserved with medical or obtaining medical services are able to come during that weekend and actually then receive dental, medical, and optometry services by these professionals. And so, as we looked at the calendar and as we thought of a conflict that would occur, obviously, with students and with this event, we thought it would be easier if we could find a day around this time to actually not hold school. And that would also allow students who are in our service area to not worry about being in school even though they might be themselves in need of some of these medical services. And so, that's why we're calling it a medical, or Family Medical Day. It's one to support the community services in the area to provide these medical services, and then to also allow our students to take part in the program as well.
So, that's a unique date on this particular calendar. Any questions about that particular day? Also, October seems to be the unique month. Like this year, November, we had Veterans' Day on Tuesday, so we gave families Monday off for a longer weekend. But, October 23rd, that is a Friday. We've deviated from our normal Monday professional development days because there's a special event. The National Science Teachers Association is putting on a conference in Reno. It's the first time that this particular conference has been west of the Mississippi in 12 years. The state is rolling out new academic content standards for science based on the Next Generation Science Standards in the fall for K-12, and it is such a timely conference to have locally where we only need to send people to Reno and they can be in their home in their beds at night. So, it's a very cost-effective professional development opportunity that we could provide our K-12 science folks. And so, we have listed that day as a professional development day. That's not something that's going to be repeated each year because this particular conference happens to be in Reno this next year. Also, on the calendar, our Orange Beach County Education Association votes on the winter and spring break, and there is a little different date there. If you look, January 4th is a Monday. Normally, we come back to school on Monday, but this year, the Teachers Association voted to have that day, to have the winter holiday extend just a little bit longer, which is different than in the years past. Normally, our board policy states that we must have the calendar approved by May 1st. However, this is the time of the year that Mrs. Cortez gets calls from our community partners. When we set our date, our start date and our calendar dates as a district, that triggers the domino effect within our community. It allows the Boys and Girls Club, the Community Center, our own charter school, Carson Montessori, to set their schedules as well, as well as having our own teachers, our coaches, when they go to NIAA, to set their schedules, as well as our clubs and our advisor teachers to be able to set up competitions for CTE, et cetera. It allows people to be able to plan for the beginning of the next year. Any questions regarding the calendar?
Okay, Laurel?
I just have a question regarding the Thanksgiving break and whether or not, I mean, I guess my question would be, do we tend to see a lot of absences on the Wednesday before with people traveling, and have we ever considered maybe doing half-day or holiday on, or having the break include Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? I know some places are even doing the whole week off. I don't know.
Right. You know what? That is a week, that is a week that each year I look at and I go, you know, you know, I've been in other districts too where we've had, especially like in Elko where there's a lot of travel involved if you're going to go see family. I looked at out east, and I'd noticed that, yes, they do have, some places will have that week off, but I've noticed too, in other places, the kids will, students will have that week off, and then teacher training will occur during that time. We've tried several things throughout the years. One year, we did have the students off on the 25th and teacher training on the 25th, and absenteeism was high. And so, when I look at that date and I look at absenteeism, it isn't, it isn't as high as one would think.
Okay, because I know that the attendance is a concern, or the first part of the year is when they look at attendance for the performance star rating. And so, if that's a day that is high in absenteeism, maybe it's worth looking into to give it off.
Always open for creative ideas on that particular week. I also know that some districts, for their parent conferences, some places, what they do is they use that day before Thanksgiving as a district comp day for things that they've negotiated in contracts and things like that. So, you see different creative things on that day. And then, when I've talked to districts about those of you who take that day off or have a partial day, what's your attendance like on that Monday and Tuesday? It's not great. So, and it depends on when hunting season is for that particular state. You know, this is, this is, this week has caused me to call several states and different school districts to find out what creative things they've been doing because I want a perfect answer. I want students to be in school, but I'd like to give a little travel time.
I think since you're, since we're giving them an extra day off in October, maybe they should come back to school on the 27th.
Oh.
Anyway, I have a thought about...
It's a good thing students don't vote for school board members.
Anyway, I do have a thought, Mr. Stokes, since you bring it up, and you guys are probably well ahead of me. But, if we're doing Family Wellness Day on the 16th, maybe there's interactions that some of the schools or some of the, or the district wants to have with families on the same day that we could do in schools. Not bringing everybody in, but you know, there might be some, you know, maybe there's some family interactions that we want to have with, that the district wants to have with families on that day also. Just a, just a thought.
Will the health center be open by then?
We'll know a little bit more about that, Trustee Wilkie, after the supervisors' meeting on the 5th of March.
Do you have a board comment?
Sue, when would graduation be? Is it that Saturday after the last day?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I just was wondering if you could explain a little bit about the early release days and why there seem to be so many, and what's happening there when that happens?
With the governors and our state superintendents' plan to raise student achievement in this great state of Nevada, there has been many changes coming down the pike, as well as an energy that's going on throughout the district in that particular area and for our strategic plan. And when you look at the time that schools actually have with each other, every great business, every family has to have that communication between the leadership of that household, the leadership of the business, and the staff that they, that they work with and support with. So, that early release time, that hour and a half on these days extra that the schools have would be for like what Mr. Green was talking about, an extended PLC time. You said in 40 minutes, those teachers meet once a week. They have 40 minutes to be able to get that work done. For our elementary schools, it allows them to have a little bit more time with their data, looking at their, to collaborate, look at their results of their data, and to set up interventions and enrichment opportunities for their students. So, looking at a chance like next year, the teacher evaluation, the new teacher evaluation process will be rolled out in the fall for the Nevada Educator Performance Framework. We're expected to train all of our teachers. Our teachers have had an introduction to the framework, but we're expected to go through four modules of training for each teacher in our school district, and that will take for September and October. Also, so we'll use a little bit of the early release daytime for that, as well as our full professional development days for that particular process to make sure our principals and our teachers do understand that, that new evaluation process. We also, next fall, the high school is, we're privileged to be able to roll out, advance our one-to-one project, our mobile device project to the high school, and that itself is a whole training endeavor involving the staff at both Pioneer and Carson High School. And the third big piece next year is to roll out of the Next Generation, or Nevada Academic Content Standards based on the Next Generation Science Standards. And so, that is going to be brand-new training for elementary folks. Our middle school folks have been working diligently on that, so they're a little bit ahead. And then, it's also, the high school's been doing some work, but it will be new for our elementary folks especially.
Sue, thanks. You answered part of my question. So, Dionne, thanks for answering or asking that. I think I ask this question every year, but I have a short-term memory. So, but when we look at early release days versus minimum days, and just thinking about the parents, and have we thought about, like, splitting the difference because there's five of each, of just making it, making them each end at the same time just for the ease of remembering? And why don't we do that is my question?
Well, and what we've done is, this year, we've eliminated some minimum days from the middle school and just kept early release days except for graduation at the end of the year. They needed those two days at the end of the year for minimum days. And then, also, we tried the student-led conference on our early release date, and they need some extra time to get all those students, and especially over at Carson Middle for those conferences. It's just a sheer numbers thing. So, each year, I've been trying to whittle down the minimum day time just for that confusion purposes. And just so you know too, with the early release days, when we were looking at it as a strategy time for student achievement, we were looking, like Lyon County, they have either early release days or late start days depending on what part of the county. Because of their being spread out, the superintendent has allowed the school to be able to decide what they need for their particular area. Washoe County has an early release day every Wednesday. We kind of was looking at that model too, and this is our, this will be our third year doing that. And these are about the same number of days that we've had in the past.
And my question really was, I understand why we have to do it. I think what I was asking is, when we look at early release and we look at minimum days, you know, I realize we have to be in school a certain amount of time, but if you split the difference and say whether it's early release or minimum day, say for the high school, why not just call it noon? Do you have, do you have a problem with parents forgetting when school starts on those days?
Or ends.
Or ends, I mean.
There's always somebody, you know. There's, there's always somebody when you're working with the numbers that we are. But, our parents have been great once we get, get rolling. But, I would like to look at all of this as like early release daytime and eliminate minimum days so that we do have, have one. Yeah.
Is there a reason for choosing Mondays over Fridays on those days? I'm sure, the teachers have to stay, but as a parent, sometimes it's nice if you can peel out if you're planning on going somewhere.
So, a Friday would be best for parents, but also, there's that teacher absenteeism piece that we have to check to watch. And also, Mondays were picked for secondary schools because that is the day where we have the least amount of school activities in the school district. So, we have, that way, we have people who are involved, not just in games of some sorts, but as far as our coaches for, you know, our people working with drama, our people working with music concerts, all kinds of school events tend not to happen so much on Monday. And yet, I know in the elementary, that was like one day of the week that we could probably do something with our parents because they weren't running off to secondary things for the other days. But, that was, that was the reason.
Other questions from the board? I have just one question, and I know Dave Dolly has a series of questions. So, why was the 17th picked as a start date, and we end on the Memorial Day weekend in which we would have graduation? And do we have any conflicts going on here?
Ending, I'll start with the first piece. Typically, our district has started the third Monday in August, so that happened. Some of these dates will shift as that calendar shifts, where it looks a little later, it looks a little earlier, and this is one of the earlier times. But typically, our district has started on the third Monday of August. It's been happening since I walked into the position. And then, the second, with the exception of one year where we had extensive construction, and then we started on the fourth Monday of August because we needed that time for construction.
Okay, so it's not a policy, it's just something that was...
That we've been doing.
Okay, so we can change?
Yes, we could. And then, May 27th, leading up to Memorial Day periodically, every so many years, it does butt up to Memorial Day, and there hasn't been complaints that allows people who are traveling in town to come into town to be with family and give them an extra day without having to take off work.
Okay, we don't have to approve this until May 1st, you said. I'm just concerned about that, that early start time and the time that, on the 27th. And I know, you know, we've had the graduation on the first week in June. When you do these considerations, do you get with a lot of different people, or how do you determine this?
When I go through the calendar, we meet with the secondary, all the principals, and we talk to them about what their needs are. The Teacher Association, they vote on their part as far as the winter break and spring holidays, so the teachers have their input in that particular area. And so, that's how we, I'll call the, our stakeholders, our community stakeholders, I spent quite a bit of time, not so much this year, but last year, calling Boys and Girls Club, calling the Community Center, talking about our calendar dates. And basically, they said that we're here to serve our community, and what dates that you set, we work around.
Ron, I'll just, I'll just say one thing I hear from parents all the time is, the weather is always good in August, and it's never good in June, and they wish they could be out of school in August and go later into June. But, that's just something everybody says.
Okay.
Well, that's what I mean. We could, we could go to the fourth Monday, and then we'd have it in the first week of June. It's just, to me, but maybe it's just, just me. It just seems kind of like the lifestyle here would accommodate that, like Laurel said. In any event, I'd just like to hear from Dave Dolly because he had a lot of questions.
Sure.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you again. Just as a parent, I'm just, I am a little concerned about the number of days off and the time off for the proficiencies, for the teachers. I think the teachers do an awesome job, and they have a really extremely tough job. There's no way that I would want to do that. However, when you're talking about having 18 early release days for the teachers, and then having five additional days, full professional development days on top of that, Mrs. Kima did say that Washoe County has a similar thing. Washoe County does. The regular, Washoe County gets out 45 minutes early on Wednesdays, and it works. My son's in the International Baccalaureate Program at Worcester, and so, they do do that, but they don't have the full days off for the professional development days. Mr. Stokes did say that on October 16th was the best day for the Family Health Day. Why can't it be done in the summer? Why does it have to be done when the kids are in school? I don't understand that. I don't understand that. Washoe County does start earlier. Washoe County actually starts the week before, and they go into June, two weeks, and they have an additional week, or they actually have a week off in October, they have an additional week off in Christmas, and they have an additional week off for spring break. It works out awesome. It really works out great. For people who want to leave town and do it during the offseason, it's incredible. It works out really good. For people who have children in two different school districts like myself, and I can't imagine, there's a whole lot, but Washoe County has a lot of signature academies, which Carson City does not. And so there are more people that are going to the Washoe County School District, and to be able to coordinate those two schedules would be nice. But again, my big concern is, are the 18 days plus the five full days for the professional development? I think the kids, I'm concerned about the kids with all of the testing, with the MAP test, with the SBACs, with the NATE, with the professional proficiency examinations. I'm concerned that the amount of time that my kids are spending with their teachers is becoming less and less, with teachers going to coaching training, with all these different types of training, where they're missing school and they're having substitutes. Last week, my kids watched The Lion King in one of their classes. That was the extent of their, of their class, because one of the teachers was out, and he had a substitute. I just, I don't agree with that, and I don't agree with the fact that the teacher should be missing this much time teaching the children. I really do appreciate the teachers. I think they're doing an awesome job. I understand they need the time, but I just think it's a lot of time off. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Any comments from either Sue or Richard, on what was just presented?
I can respond to the, to the RAM event. That was a date that was presented to us that fit with the RAM program. So absolutely, would it have been a better opportunity for us, in general, to have that during the summertime? Yes, but we were presented with the date of October 16th through the 18th, and we said that we would try to help as we can and work within the community partnershipsing concept that we believe in.
President Swirzik, I live in a different county, and my kids in Lyon County start late every Thursday, and it's over 30 weeks during the year that they're late start, including the four or five full professional days that happen for teachers in Lyon County. Just thought I'd say that for the record. And they've been doing it for 10 years, at least.
On, I guess it's two-part, like, on the 16th, we're not removing a day of school, we added one on, didn't we, because of that?
We will still provide 180 days for our students over the course of the school year.
And then, so with the early-release days, those count as full days? Or do we, do we look at an hourly or a day total?
Those early-release days are counted as full days, because of the time we get out of school.
Joe?
Sue, I know when we compare, I mean, we see it on paper all the time, when we compare Nevada with other states and the rankings and all that, but, and if we don't know the answer now, if we could maybe talk about it later, but how do we compare in terms of the number of days students are required to be in school versus these other, say, higher-achieving states? And also, the number of hours per day we're in school? Because people have come to me and asked that question, say, you know what, yeah, I think to Dave's point, more student-teacher contact, especially if the teachers are good, never seems to be a bad idea. And how does that factor into how we operate things?
So in my investigations, when I was looking at number of days, highest, so pretty-high-achieving school districts have about 200 days. So when I saw that, I thought, oh, that's what I want to set my sights on, knowing there's budgets and all of that, negotiations and all of that. But, but when I really looked at the majority of the school districts across the nation, most of them are at 170, 175. They're trying to catch up to where we are, at 180. And I realized that, that I don't really have a case, as far as, I have a case for student achievement, of course, but when I'm looking nationwide, and we know that many school districts across the nation teach less days than we do, they needed to catch up before we, we weren't looking like we were behind, if I want to point that out. So you see 180, 185 tends to be what people are striving for, but 175 is about the norm.
Okay, one more, second part to that same question. Some of the teachers I've spoken to, and everybody has a different feel on it, but when we look at these, I'm going to lose the terminology now, because I'm trying to find it, but these early-release-type days for the purpose of school PLCs and whatnot, does it, would it make sense, or have you thought about maybe not having so many early releases, but maybe just combine those into, like, just one or two days off, and you just get more, you know, more bang-for-your-buck in a day, and, you know, get, you know, whole days, the rest of those days where we otherwise would be getting off early? I don't know if one beats another, it's just a question.
Sometimes they're used for different purposes. The early-release days are, are the principals' time. The district doesn't dictate those, those days. That's principal time with sites. With the exception, I have to have two days to make sure I get in all of the Nevada Educator Performance Framework training in, so that we get it done as early in the beginning of the year as possible, for principals to be able to start evaluations and have everybody informed before they start their evaluations.
Dave?
I'm sorry, sorry. Are these days, or is it in statute? These are required, or who?
The statute allows up to five professional, professional days, and they allow five minimum days for the districts to use. We don't use all five, with the exception of the elementary.
You're allowed five minimum days, and five minimums days would be an hour earlier, but you're taking 18?
But that's, what we do is, on the calendar, when the state requires us to fill out what our calendar is, they're looking at the number of minutes all year. So because of the length of our day, we have enough minutes in the year, so it's okay to take off the part on the early-release day, because we're, we're past the time that constitutes a full day of school.
Okay, I understand that, but then you've got the NATE testing, you've got the SBAC testing, and those are considered learning days, correct? But those are testing days.
Yes.
Those aren't learning days.
Correct.
That doesn't make sense to me, because I understand it's 180 days, but it should be 180 learning days, not 180, or 100, however many, based on tests that, that I was not told I could decline. That's another issue that I'm hoping to bring up next, next, next board meeting, but I just, I, I don't think we should be trying to compare ourselves to others. I know a lot of people are, but I think that we should be trying to set ourselves ahead and think ahead, and not, not say, okay, well, we're teaching an extra five days, where most people are teaching 175. You know, we should be trying to strive for better, and I don't, I just have a problem with that. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
All right. Steve?
I think David brings up some good points. I'd like to just play a little devil's advocate or give you some thought with this. We recognize that the Carson City School District has been undertaking some training and some endeavors that's different than any, maybe any district in the nation. And I guess the direction with this is that, to my understanding, and, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, I'm just an outside observer for a lot of it also, but in our district, what we've been trying to do, and I think reasonably well, is improve the quality of how we use the time in front of the students. And I think we're working stronger at this than any other district in the state. I can't speak for the rest of the country, but in looking, everything I've seen the last couple of years, we're trying to improve the quality of our teachers, so that the time that they spend in front of the students is a better time, and they're getting more results. And I think what we've seen so far, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I, again, what I've seen so far, is we're making good progress with this. We're doing very well with it. Now, we may not have the total number of minutes in front of students that maybe other districts have, but I would contest that the very things that we're spending, our this PLC time and our teamwork time and our other time on that requires the early-release days, are the things that are improving our teaching staff, so the students are getting a better education in the time provided than they would be if we just said, let's throw total minutes at it. And we look at many things out there in the business, in the sports, in the other organizations, and there seems to be a concentration out there saying, hey, can we improve the quality of whatever we're doing? Can we be better at what we're doing so that we get more done in less time? And, you know, we're seeing benefits of that. So I think we have to measure, not the number of minutes that we're seeing, but what are we doing with the minutes that we have? And I think the only way that we improve our education staff is by spending the time with them and doing the things that we've been doing. And personally, I think we've gone down this road, where we've said we want to train our staff, and I think we need to maintain that commitment to it. You know, we're, we're in the middle of a five-year program here, and hopefully, we're able to sustain it past that, but, you know, it's like playing tennis or doing anything else. You can't visit it twice a year and make improvement. I think you have to visit it on a regular basis, and that's what the schedule reflects. But that's what I think we're doing, Dave, is that we're getting better, and yes, we're maybe sacrificing some, some time in front of students with it, but I think it's going to wind up with an improved education for our students by spending this training time. Anyway, that's what I see.
Laurel?
Just a question I have, related to this and related to Dave's questions there. I remember it was about a year ago that the younger Ms. Golick, 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 the Eagle Valley student came in, and she said there was so much substitute time when her teacher, when she was in class, but her teacher was a sub for training. And we considered that at the time part of the necessary evil of implementing the changes with the Race to the Top. Are those, and that's not reflected in the calendar, the days that teachers may, students may be in school, but their teacher may be subbed out. Are those days decreasing this year from the last year? Are they still happening just as much?
If I look at the numbers, they shifted some of the work that the middle school was being pulled out before, when Ms. Golick came before you. There's still some of that going on, but that, the days have decreased for the middle school, but increased for the high school during this phase of Race to the Top. Next year, for the high school, they should decrease, because they should be completed with their curriculum and assessment work, because they're in heavy in the early development phases of that. Next year should be more towards refinement. And then also, with the middle school, the goal would be is that that would be lessened. And as far as the elementary is concerned, we're looking at, my team and I, we're looking at ways for the elementary. They have been subbed out as maybe a representative for English Language Arts, another for science, another one for math. We're looking for ways of doing that differently, so we don't have to sub the teachers out.
I would just hope that we continue to do that, because that concerns me, because, you know, with the early-release days and with those days, if the student has questions for their teacher, but they've got a sub that day, and then, you know, you run out of days in the week when they can actually meet with their teacher.
Brian, you want to?
Brian Wallace, OCA president, for the record. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, trustees and board. Going back to the very first part of the conversation, and working with vacation days, which is the only aspect of the calendar the association can set per NRS 288 with negotiations, the one big comment we get every year is exactly the questions you've asked, is why are we starting so early? We get a lot of comments about the same issue about the weather, and why can't we start after Labor Day? And a lot of it's out of our control, when you look at surrounding districts and how we participate with our sports programs, band programs. I mean, the one thing Carson City has going for it is, we're so rich in everything, it's hard to find what really works right now, because we do have so much going on. Piggybacking on what trustee Crossman just said, and all the initiatives we've undertaken over the last five years, when you go all the way back to the Eagle Valley School Improvement Grant with the feds, the one-to-one piece has become extremely powerful for those of us who have a rather high absentee rate, which one of them is myself, because of association work at both the state level and the national level. But one-to-one, especially through programs like Edmodo, have completely empowered me to a different level, being able to leave very detailed plans for students through that program on Edmodo. So I'm not always relying on a substitute who, who at best is a layman coming in, you know, a journeyman trying to do an expertise work, and it's really nice to have kids be able to rely back onto that. It also helps catch the kids in little fibs here and there when they tell the sub, oh, he won't do it this way, when it's online, and the substitute gets to see the same thing the kids see. So that's just one of the ways that some of our initiatives have actually begun to empower us, even if we happen to be absent from the classroom. But the big root of the problem, unfortunately, is the number of initiatives we've actually taken on. When looking at middle school time, since I started 13 years ago now, where school really started almost right at eight o'clock and we were done at 2:15, now schools start at 7:50 and kids are dismissed at 2:30. We've added time to the middle school program, and we've also added time over the past year to the elementary program. The unfortunate side effect of that is, is the ability to hold the necessary meetings with staff at times. Simplistic things, it's just as a staff meeting goes beyond contract time, and your teachers are now starting to be torn between, I don't want to work to contract, but I really need to go home, because I have kids in other programs myself, because I'm not just a teacher, but I'm a teacher-parent within the district, and I need to get my child to this, and I need to go to this, and they're having to leave staff meetings, or they're not able to make morning staff meetings when we schedule them early, because of, you know, childcare issues. Then we get into other little blips on the radar of flex time, which erodes contract language, because your dedicated staff is trying to find a way, as long, as well as your dedicated site admin, to make all this fit. And the one big thing I have actually heard this year, which is opposite the other 16 districts out there in the state of Nevada, is, let's just lengthen the school day. That has been a very big comment this year, is, why can't we just go from a seven-and-a-half-hour day to eight-hour day? And as Mrs. Kima just pointed out, and he's probably frowning at me right about this time, it's solely a funding issue, that all the governor's initiatives and other pieces of the proposal and such are definitely wonderful, but the governor's also missing the other point of this part, is you're trying to cram it into too short of a day. Eight hours almost isn't even enough. Mrs. Kima nailed it on the head with, why can't we go to 200 days? We've actually been pressured, as the association, by certain staff members to push for, add more days to the school year, because they're working days, which equates to salary like anyone else, any other job would receive. So it is technically a pay raise, but you are working those days, but we understand that at this point, because of the number of initiatives we've undertaken. But again, it goes back to funding. The governor can propose all he wants right now with, I want this program for you, I want this program for you, and I want this program for you, but when do, when do you want us to fit it into our day? Especially on top of the initiatives we've undertaken, such as one-to-one, the district moving toward Mastery Connect, trying to actually hold staff meetings that don't already go beyond contract time. And then you take into bigger programs, like the Success for All Reading Program, which has several different committees now that are required to meet, that are struggling to find time to meet. The district's trying to find, and site admins trying to find time within their budgets to reimburse teachers for those times that are going well beyond contract time in some cases. So as you begin to explore and really get more hands-on with the calendar, this segues into later this evening, too, with your resolution you're considering in supporting the governor and his proposals. It's just adding more... It's just adding more to our plates, as the public has already spoken, as a very dedicated parent at Eagle Valley, who's got three kids through the system right now, has spoken that you can continue to do this, but where would you like us to fit it in our day at this point? And that goes for site admin also, who are also pulled just as much as we are currently. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
So I just had a quick thing, and, and Mr. Wallace said a few things that I was going to say, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Reynolds that I, I would hope and I would think that some of this time to be, to plan and to strategize with your colleagues and to implement some of the programs, like the one-to-one and being able to use Edmodo as a resource, you know, you, our kids might be able to just go on and do it, but, you know, some of our teachers might need some training. And so having that time to be able to do that and use the resources that we have decided are important to us, I think will allow us to work smarter and alleviate some of that having to work longer. Now, having said that, I think it is important, if we're going to work longer, we have to make that decision. Do we want to have a longer day and do we want to pay for it? And so that's a, that's a conversation, you know, we could have. It probably isn't around the calendar, but, you know, at some point we might want to have that conversation. And, and I think that would, you know, to, to what Brian said, I think that would alleviate some of those issues. And I also think that the early release days, they help with that subbing out and to have that time to be able to do that, then the teachers don't have to sub out the whole days. I do wish that we could have some continuity, and if we could have one day and it was always the same time, then everybody knows, every Wednesday in Washoe County, everybody knows. And so I think you would have less of those issues where people don't know, know, or, and I don't know how that works with the calendar, but I, I think it would be something that would, and I know you're going to need some days for the parent-led conferences and parent-teacher conferences. I get that, but if there could be a little bit more continuity and a little more thought to, do we just want to have every Monday? You know, since we have a lot of Mondays, I know Mondays are holidays, so you might have some issues with Monday, and there's other things to consider, but anyway, that's my two cents on it.
Brian?
I did have one question, though. On the, on this, on the things that you're talking about getting the training from, I mean, some of them are initiatives that we have decided to do, but some of them are also requirements that the state has put on, has put on us as well, as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. Then, you know, the next generation science standards, that is a state rollout that we're following in order to be prepared for the science assessments that come down the following year. That's, that's the state's timeline that we must follow. The same with the teacher performance evaluation framework. We must follow that path as well.
I don't want to miss the microphone time. Everybody's dragging down. I had to give you something. I think it was Volmer's book, is it Jamie Volmer? He lays out just a wonderful case for more school days, I think, if, if anybody's read it. It's really good. When you said 200 days, yeah, I agree. Obviously, money's a problem, but I would certainly side on, and especially if, I know there's more than one association involved, and there's, the employee costs are the bulk of our costs. But even if we were still working within 180 days, but instead of early release days, we did full training days and then had a full 180 teaching days, teachers could possibly get more contract hours out of doing it that way. And then, you know, maybe we add a, a literal week of days for the kids, but they're still only in 180, and the teachers get their training all in, say, one day instead of a bunch of half-days or early release days. And then if we can find the money, everybody wins then, at least how I see it. But, you know, I, I think, I think we all agree that the more time that children spend with their assigned teacher or teachers, that's optimum. That's what we want. So if we can come to a workaround with the, I think this is moving towards us not passing this tonight. That's my feeling. So I think if, if we can explore some other options, it might be good.
Well, let me just kind of finish this up. I, I've got a lot, a lot to do tonight. I think what Steve said is, deserves a lot of attention here. The quality of the education is changing. The Race to the Top in itself, from the sixth to the 12th grade, with learning guides, self-assessments, and, and what it's creating, has already created something a little special in this district of a teacher-teacher connection. Teachers are now talking to each other a little bit differently and with a commonality of, of getting something that is good for the, for the students. The next part of that is the, the teacher-student connection. Now, just because we have learning guides, there's that next step. And that's going to, and that's a, that's a major, major hurdle, but it's going to, all of that is leading to the quality of education that, that is going to be second to none in this country, let alone in the state of Nevada. So when we bring this, you know, to a head tonight, you know, we could, what we can do, since we're not pressed for time, so may first, there's a lot of things that have been said, this can be brought back at the next meeting, you know, to, to give this some thought, rather than try to go ahead and pass this calendar unless the board so wishes to do that, do this tonight.
Can I can make, I would move to have this on the next agenda so that, that we could invite more public comment, too, if need be, but have it for possible, what is it, action, but not vote on it tonight.
Well, and again, I'm going to bring this back. You know, we've got the quality of education issue, and I, and I think we're moving there. When you combine that with a learner-centered model, that's what it's all about. We're doing something different, and it's, it's all for the benefit of the kids. Stacy?
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I was, it's probably four again.
Can you, can you restate it?
I move that we move this discussion to our next meeting with the same layout for possible action at that meeting, but take no action tonight.
Seconded per discussion.
I guess my question would be if, if we're talking about it later, but we're not changing anything, what, why are we talking about it later?
And that's what my question is, too. What, what exactly do you want staff to do for the next two weeks to the next meeting to, to the calendar? Is there some direction that they're supposed to be taking or?
Yeah. Well, I think that, for me personally, I think there was a really compelling case to actually start in the fourth week of August and move one week later in the school year. So that would be, I think we could have some options to look at. And also to just put it onto an agenda, the schedule's a big deal to everybody involved, folks in town, folks in the community. Just like when we redo our policies, it, it might just make some sense to have it come up twice so that folks could see it or discuss it and then come down and let us know what they think.
Just, I just counted the weeks from the third week of August until December 18th, and it's 18 weeks, which is two quarters. Is that why we've started on the third week, so that we can get our two nine-week quarters finished before the Christmas or winter break?
Yes.
Then it's not just tradition, it's, it, there's a reason.
There is a reason. That, that is part of the work that goes into this calendar, is that one of the things that has changed over time is the semester did end in January, and the work has, the request from the families and from the teachers and administration was, can we end the semester at winter break so that we don't have to come back? Otherwise, before it was, you came back, you had two weeks, you had your, you know, you, you left for Christmas break and you came back to finals. And we were trying to end the, the break at, in December, like colleges do.
I know that we've discussed that in past years. I think the discussion last year was along the lines that it was, you know, that, this, being able to have the test before Christmas break was a substantial benefit to the students and overloads maybe some of the other concerns that came up, if I recall the discussion.
I remember that part the way Steve does, and as a parent, I like having that semester wrapped up before the winter break. It's just, it, it's just tough to, you know, to think about winter break and your kids are studying the whole time while everybody else is drinking eggnog. I don't.
And when you have two, when you have new students coming in, they tend, the biggest, the moving times is summer, and the second biggest moving time, if you look at U-Haul and you look at statistics, is over winter break. And if you have students coming in from another school district, have kind of got that two-week downtime or three, depending how far you go into the past Christmas, where they're in that limbo land, they can't earn credit in that two weeks for first semester because it's too late coming into the schools. And so that's an issue for students who transfer in, too, if we don't end before Christmas.
Sorry, can I? You know, my, my feeling, and I'm with Ryan, and I want to reiterate what Steve said, is I think quality is important, and I think we're doing, I think we're doing the right things to improve. You know, you can always improve quality, and we're doing the right things to improve them. And I think if delaying voting on this for the purpose of getting some public input, but also to see, and I'm not saying you haven't, I know you have, but seeing if there's a way, and it's like an algebra problem, of increasing the contact, you know, increasing our quality, increasing our contact time between students and teachers, and doing that in a way that doesn't mess with the budget, if you will. You know, i, if taking more time would, would allow some kind of increase in that, I'd be all for delaying it. But I want to make sure if we're going to push it off, you know, we're achieving something in the two weeks or even four weeks, you know, to do it. You know, I, I, I just want to make sure we, we move in a certain direction if we're going to do that.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Wallace. If, the 25th isn't until a Friday, would the association, Teacher Association, look at that first week and that, the 20th, 20th, or the 21st, 22nd of December? Like if it was a week later, going half a week? I don't know, just throwing ideas out. Is that something that would, they would look at in the couple of weeks before we brought this back?
It's definitely something we can take back to the membership and see how they would feel on it. Last year, Mrs. Kima, when examining the calendar, you know, looking at Veterans Day being on a Tuesday, knew we would suffer really high absentee rates on that Monday, not just with students, but teachers are also going to flex that a little bit themselves for their own families and such. So to work around that, she approached the association to ask if we could swap one of the days out, the way spring break was going to start on a Friday again, because teachers want to start it with that. It's, again, it's one of those traditional things that's kind of crept up, was we've set the calendar over 30-plus years of setting calendars when it comes to vacation dates. So the answer is definitely yes, it's something we can take back and entertain with the membership and see how they feel about it, knowing what they've expressed previously when it comes to start dates and end dates, which the district is allowed to set by NRS.
I do want to say real, I don't want to take away anything from what you've done here, I'm sure. Because when I was coming into the meeting and I, all right, the calendar, they do what they want, I never even thought of half of the stuff that was brought up. So I want to thank you and whoever else helped, because I'm sure you've already beat up a lot of this, and, and by no means any disrespect with our ideas.
I just want to point out one thing. When, when looking at, to talk to your point about the early release days versus the minimum days, we've had discussions with the, the middle school principals about those last days, if they were, were early release days rather than minimum days. The initial thinking was, is that that would push the graduations later, but maybe if we had this, these dates this year and then had a year for the principals and the parents, the PTAs and PTOs, plan for those two middle school graduations and the activities around them, there might be some, some creative thinking that could go on there. And as the other piece, the only other part that we have minimum days is those early, the student-led conferences, which is something that was brought to my attention from our, from our, from our teachers in the district, that they needed more, we needed more time because we were going over contract time, as well as for the elementaries, especially in the fall, those, those days are, are full with those parent conferences, morning, noon, and night, to try to accommodate those parents. So they were trying to get as much time out of that day without calling the full day off in order to make that happen.
Additional comments from the audience?
Mr. Swirzick, I just want to say from, from our county to our county up north, we have colleagues up there as well. The jury's still out as far as if Washoe County's schedule is actually effective for student achievement. It's still early, it's too early to tell. I know I have colleagues that still question their new schedule and wonder if it's working for everybody. So I think they're still experimenting with that. I also get comments that, you know, they wish that they had as high as graduation rate as Carson High. So as far as our student achievement is concerned, I think we can stand by our hard work amongst our admin and our teachers and our support staff, that we're all working really hard in all these days that we've been identifying, whether they're contact days with students or not. You're right, Mr. Swirzick and Mr. Reynolds, it's all about quality. We're there.
Well, Jose, one quick comment. I've heard the same comments about the, the Washoe County schedule. It's, there's not unanimous support yet for that schedule in, in terms of student achievement.
Just two questions. Ms. Kima, if the vote is put off till the next meeting, what does that impact with our other, with the other schedules and such? Does it have a significant impact on our, our partners in the community or anything?
Well, they, I look at Renee because of that, that's who they call. And she's been giving them.
I understand, and I think that, I think that this is a very important thing because, yeah, I'm familiar with several organizations that set their year after we do. So anyway, is this two weeks going to have a big impact, is my question?
Renee, what are they saying to you when they call? They're, they're wishing for it last week?
They would like it the sooner the better, but everybody that I've spoke to, I always make it very clear that it's, these are proposed dates and nothing is final until it's approved by the board. So.
Then the second question that I'd like to ask is, what exactly are we expecting to learn in the next two weeks that we don't know now?
That's what I would need from the board.
Because I'm not, yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm not, we've already put in the principal time discussing with staff and discussing back up with admin. I mean, I don't know what other, what cycle are we going to go through that we haven't been through.
What I was thinking to accomplish there would be more public input. So just like when we do policies that are within.
You won't get it.
And may, and maybe not. However, I'm not going to take it out of, I'm not going to take the opportunity away from them. I think they should have, anybody who wants to come down should have that opportunity. We do these policies twice, and they obviously, although they affect our district and us, you, you could argue that the calendar reverberates even greater than the policy. So I was just thinking in terms of being more in tune with the public, giving them another opportunity to chime in.
I think it's a good, I think one of the things I want to bring up, and that's this, school district as opposed to, to a supervisor meeting or a meeting of other committees, our communication in many cases is through our, our site administration, because that's who's talking to the parents. So we learn more from our principals and our educators than we're going to learn at a school board meeting, because this just isn't where very many people show up to give us the opinion. us the opinions. The opinions are given at the schools. And so, you know, I mean, we've got a, you know, Dave, you're, you're very interactive at the school. I'm sure the principal hears from you quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
So, I guess I, what I'm saying is that in many of these things, what we hear from the principals is what, is what we're hearing from the public.
I do tend to agree with Mr. Green, because I received the, the calendar yesterday, and, and I asked Renee to email it to me, but no one else has seen it, as far as I know. I mean, you, you've seen it, I, I don't know if it was sent out earlier, but the, the general public has not seen it, and I had one day. So it would be nice for, for the other parents to, to be able to see it and, and to, to be given enough time to comment if they wanted to.
The motion was to, to move the possible action to the next meeting, so this would have been considered a discussion, and then have the topic again for possible action next meeting. And then if, my thinking was, wouldn't you, would we want something changed? I don't know, maybe when Mrs. Keeman goes back, she looks at something and decides something different, or it would give us everybody time to think more on it and disseminate this into the public.
Just a thought, I mean, it's kind of late in the year to make too many big changes, possibly, but should we establish a committee to look into, because we had a later start time committee that we're still waiting to hear back from? Should we have one look into calendaring? I don't know.
No.
Yes.
I'll say yes, because I'd like to hear if the Association has any different thoughts on that.
Yes.
Next agenda.
Well, before, but we've got Mrs. Story, and she's got her kids here, too, so if we could keep that in, in idea, too.
She, she is, she's Agenda Items 11 and 12. I'm wondering if we should make a motion to amend the agenda and let her get her kids to bed.
Let's do that, let's do it.
I think we made a motion, I think.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
President, members of the board, my name is Sheila Story, for the record, and I, I do apologize, I usually do not bring my children to these, but my husband is out of town. And we live in Dayton, and we didn't have time from the school activities to get home and get back in a timely fashion, so I told my kids, I'll buy them ice cream after this. So, anyway, we're going to relook at the proposed policy. I did bring a gentleman with me, his name is Dustin Booth, he's the epidemiologist for Carson City Health and Human Services. He's a gentleman whom I call upon throughout the year to answer questions that I might have that are public health-related. So I did send him this policy and asked him to review it, and then he sent back his comments to me, and that's how we kind of came to this resolution. In regards to the policy, we did shorten it quite a bit, and we put more of the information within the regulation. So do you guys have any questions regarding this policy?
I just have one question, because I was helping in kindergarten a couple of weeks ago and escorted a nosebleed to the nurse office. Does, does this policy, or would a similar type policy need to apply to other bloodborne pathogens? This is specific to HIV/AIDS, but if there's other infectious diseases that way, should we have a broader policy to cover other hepatitis, whatever might not be out there? Or is this statutory limited to this, or where should we go from there?
We do have other communicable disease policies, especially within the health office. This policy was brought up in 1988, of course, when we had the increase in HIV and AIDS. So I was always asked to bring it into policy to help protect students and their education who possibly might have HIV and AIDS. So, I'm not quite sure.
Are we on the policy or the regulation?
We're on the policy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll wait for the regulation.
Yeah. So, I'm not quite sure.
I guess my question is just perhaps we should have, if we have this one specific to protect it, it would apply to other potentially infectious diseases, that maybe they fall under IEPs, maybe they fall, or maybe we need a general policy for this.
You're talking in regards to communicable diseases, correct?
Yeah, and what might be.
You know what I should do, is I can look up and see what other states are doing, and what other districts are doing in regards to this, whether they lump it into one specific policy regarding communicable diseases, or whether they break it out into each individual type of disease.
Do we, I mean, is the Nurses Association, you guys should have, at least within yourselves, a bloodborne pathogen policy or some, a mechanism, I know in the fire world, we have, because we get exposed to stuff all the time, and so there's mechanisms whenever you have an exposure that, that set off, so even as basic as a nosebleed. You know, in my world, I come in geared up with precautions, safety precautions, but a lot of times, there's not time to do that in the elementary, not everybody's walking around with gloves and things like that. So I would assume that there's a policy, or some mechanism internally that does this.
Yes, there is. We do have a policy and procedures manual that we use within our health, health offices, and bloodborne pathogens is part of that. We also do have with our online training, all of our faculty and staff do take a bloodborne pathogens information and test, just so they are aware of, you know, what they possibly could come in contact with and how to best protect themselves.
Mr. President, members of the board, one of the things we might consider is to go ahead and take a look at the work that was done on this policy, and then we can come back with an additional policy that's a more general bloodborne pathogens. And I might just add, and Mrs. Story mentioned it, we train all of our staff members annually in bloodborne pathogens, not to say that that is intended to be in place of a policy, but we certainly could bring policy back to this body that covers a broad spectrum of bloodborne pathogens and issues.
Okay, any other entertaining motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to Policy 536 and approve February 24, 2015, as the revised date.
Second.
Motion is second, any comments from the audience? Do you have any, none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass this. Okay, let's go to the regulation.
So here we have the regulation. What we did basically is we took some of the information out of the policy and put it into the regulation. We also updated it in regards to confidentiality, who, who and when should be informed in regards to a student possibly having HIV. Then we also went into all the other different factors in regards to healthcare plans and how to protect that child, especially if they were into like a secondary type of infection. So they still can attend school, be academically successful, but yet provide them with a safe environment to learn, and also a safe environment for other students to learn.
Any comments?
Yeah, my only question on this, and it's not a hiccup to me personally, but I know just like in the first paragraph and the first sentence, they use, whoever wrote it, uses a masculine, the student or his parent guardian or his medical diagnosis. Is this consistent in all of our policies that we write, or should we look for a non-gender specific, or, I'm, I'm good either way, but I know I've, I've written policies in my own work world, and sometimes that is a hang-up for folks.
That's a good catch.
That is a good catch.
Trusty Green, and we typically put his or her.
So we could change that, so it's not gender-specific throughout the, throughout the regulation.
Steve?
Sheila, the, is it the responsibility of the school nurse to develop the medical plan for that, for an HIV-affected student?
Yes, it is. We, when you have any type of medically fragile child, whether it's diabetes, seizures, or some type of communicable disease, we are, in accordance with NRS required, to have some type of healthcare plan. And what we do within our school district is we provide a health alert first, with parent permission only, to, to the, to any individual, the teacher wants, or the parent wants them to know. And then what we do is we follow it up with a healthcare plan, and basically, it's a collaborative effort between the parent, the school nurse, the physician, and any other type of therapies they might be receiving, whether it's physical therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, school, school psychs, counselors. We then develop a, a team to develop a, a healthcare plan, which will then help them with their academic success.
As long as we're on just wording, on, on page two, the first paragraph, in the last sentence, the word handicap, don't we use the word disabled rather than handicap?
We can change that, that's not a problem.
I don't know, is it a, okay.
It's an interchangeable, but yeah, to be more sensitive, I think that's a good idea.
Any other questions? here. I mean, you do a lot of very tests, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's discussion only.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Make sure you guys get your ice cream, you deserve it.
We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back and get through the rest of these. the rest of these.
Since we're all in the, since we're convened and we're all in the room, I'd like to make a motion. I suggest that we, I suggest that we move items nine, 10, 16, 17, and 18 to a, to a future date, hear them at a future date, and quite probably our next meeting, but again, I make a motion that we don't hear them tonight and that we'll hear them at a future date.
Can we have a motion in a second? Oh, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Just discussion on the motion? Is there a time period that the governor wanted that, the state superintendent wanted that? Okay.
And that was just my question on that thing, too, if there's not a time period, and I know that was some.
So we haven't got the, we haven't got the NASB proposed resolution?
I guess that's my question, or discussion on that, is that during the NASB joint teleconference last night with the Board of Directors, there's discussion about how fast everything is moving this legislative session, and that they're needing to decide their position on matters because things are moving so quickly. So that would just be my worry, is anyone concerned that if we push that two weeks out, that that could be a problem with?
Well, it's a discussion item, it's not an action item.
Okay.
Motion in a second, any comments for the audience? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we'll move right along to Agenda Item 13, which is a discussion, possible action to approve, propose changes to the following CCSD policy, 509, withdrawal from high school, and that's Sam Santillo.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sam Santillo, I'm the Director of Carson City Adult and Prison Education Program for the Carson City School District. We're here to take a second reading or look at Policy 509 with the idea of possibly dropping Policy 216 and incorporating the information into 509. I think since the last time we spoke, we have revised, added some information based on some dialogue that the board had, some additional input from the secondary principals, again, myself, as well as some of the district office personnel. So without me really talking about it and looking at it, when we look at the new changes that we put in, I think it's more reflective of a, of an approach that is specific and detailed. I'm talking about the policy first, then we'll get into the regulation. So do we have any other additional questions on the Policy 509?
Yes, floral.
I do have a question, and I spoke with Mrs. Kima and Mr. Pavlakis before, under, I like the bullets one and two, because it reads much clearer. But the first part where it says, "Has not graduated from or currently enrolled in school," and I, reading the, which I know we're not to the regulation yet, but the regulation lists that as an "and," that it has to be not graduated and is not currently enrolled in school. So I think the language, the "or" should be changed to "and is not currently enrolled in school," because there's a big difference between "ands" and "or's" in listing those things.
Has not graduated from or currently enrolled in high school? Is that what you're referring to? Bullet one, it's in, my copy's in red.
Yes, it's in red. Has not graduated from, change the "or" to "and is not currently enrolled in school," because I believe in our discussions that it's both of those requirements have to be met, not just one.
That was clearly the intent, Mr. Santillo, and I think that Trustee Crossman's suggestion
Sure.
is good.
Okay.
Any other comment?
Read this enough, everything seems to sound the same. So it's, that's why it's great to have another set of, so.
Well, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes with, along with Trustee Crossman's changes now to Policy 509, and approve February 24, 2015, as a revised date.
And I would just change, or modify my thing to also include Paragraph One, the "or," and Paragraph Two, the "or." Should both read "and is not."
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, seeing no, no one in the audience to come forward? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So what I'd like to move on to is Regulation 509-1. It's the regulation that goes with, there's two parts to the regulation that go with the policy. The first one is the request for high school equivalency testing. It specifies the approach that the district's going to take with that request. We've made some changes to that, and you can see that on there. Also, more, most of the changes based off of the previous discussions were on the actual regulation form, the request for enrollment. That's reflective of some input from Ed Services, the student ID, the last school attended were additions to that. We changed up some of the language within the A through G boxes there. One change I'd like to kind of throw out, I kind of took the liberty, I don't know if this is the right thing to say, but I took the liberty today, I had a parent at Carson High School, and they are requesting that their daughter, her daughter, withdraw from Carson High School for medical reasons, and they want to take the HSE. And I thought, well, we have the board meeting and I have this form, why can't I just? And I talked to the mom about it, and I said, would you mind going through this form and kind of taking it through its paces, you know, that type of thing? So one of the things that came up was Item D, and I'm on the Regulation 509-1 form, where it has the demographics, and then you get into a student who is at least 16 years of age, take the HSE test prescribed. If the student meets the following criteria, please initial that you have read and understand each one of these. It's my understanding that, and as I read this, and maybe, hopefully you see it, this is the parent who's initialing these, that the parent, as the guardian of a 16 but less than 18, is initialing that they reside, that the child's this age, they haven't graduated. Have they met with the high school principal? One of the things I would like to see, based on this mom's input today, is designee, or some language there, allowing the school counselor or other administrator, because it's not realistic, in my opinion, to have the high school principal sitting in on every single one of these. Ultimately, as you see on the back page, it does require the principal's signature. That's where that input would come in. But the mom says, "The counselor called me and said, I can't get the principal to meet today, but the mom's here, I'm here, do you see a problem with that?" And I said, "That's why we're trying to vet this through this process a little bit." And I said, "Just go ahead and have you, the mom, initial it, and then I'll bring it up for discussion at the board meeting." So that's what I'm attempting to do at this point. So I'd like to add, for D, "Met with the high school principal," or language that reflects designee, something like that. So basically, all we're saying is the parent met with somebody from the high school who's in a capacity to assist with this process, but ultimately, the principal's going to be part of the process by signing the back page where it's required as a signature. I'd be fine with that, probably wording like, "high school principal," or "principal's approved representative."
Problem with that?
We typically say "or designee."
We added, can I keep moving? We added, I think we added an additional question, describe the reasons to justify why you should be allowed to take the high school equival examination. That was in response to some discussion we had from the previous week. So we have one of these in place, it's on its way to Ed Services that has the information filled out, and I think the feedback I received from the mom was appreciative of the fact that we were taking the time to ask her and her child if there was something else we could have done, could we do it? And in this case, it's a medical, medical reason, and they're just looking to ease her a little bit so she doesn't have the pressure of coming to school every single day, the credits and all that. She wants to be able to get something. She was a former honor student, and something came up, and so right now, she just wants to get something and have the ability to move on to the next level. And that's, I think, in my opinion, that's the purpose of the high school equivalency, is allow certain students that opportunity.
Just a question I have. Going back to the first page on the regulation where we've got the, the-
The narrative?
Yeah, the requirements.
Yep.
"Has not graduated from high school and is not currently enrolled in high school," basically with the, that. Should that "is not currently enrolled in high school" be included on this form that goes to the parents? But it's almost like this is a request to, I don't know, because they're kind of requesting to withdraw, so how are they enrolled? Does that need to be in that language, too?
Well, I don't know. My thought on that, to be honest with you, is that whoever's, who's ever overseeing this form should know that that's part of it. To inform you, and that's what I told her as well, that's, I have to be honest with you, this mom had a little bit of a rub with that, saying, "Why does my child still have to be enrolled at Carson High School until March 10th?" See, this situation today, they won't go on your agenda, the consent agenda, until March 10th. And what we're trying to do is keep them attached to Carson High School, enrolled, until it goes through Ed Services and goes through the process and comes to you. So I guess I'm answering it a long way, is that whoever'd be doing that would say, you can't be enrolled at the time that you take the actual high set test at the high school, you're going, we're going to withdraw you and go through that process with them. Does that answer your question, or no? I don't think I did.
Well, I think it's just because it's a little confusing, because the statute is telling us these are the requirements that you have to meet to take the test. But basically, this is a form, and one of those requirements is to not be currently enrolled in high school, but this is a form, basically, that asks to unenroll from high school. And so how can you say, I'm trying to get?
So would your recommendation be to add an additional letter on the form?
I guess I'm asking Mr. Pavlakis if he thinks it's necessary.
Yeah, it's an interesting situation. If you look at Page Two, the second to the last paragraph there, "If the request is approved, the student will be withdrawn from high school and temporarily enrolled in the adult ed program for the sole purpose of taking the exam." So I'm assuming that when, and perhaps Mr. Santillo correct me if I'm wrong, but my assumption in reviewing this form is that when a student and/or parent comes in to request permission to take the exam, that the requirements of the policy and the explanation is provided to the parent, as you indicated, you had a discussion today, that student will be enrolled, then disenrolled or unenrolled, or taken off the rolls, and then put back on if necessary.
That's correct.
So the explanation occurs, I don't know that we need to add anything to the form.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to Agenda Item 15, discussion and possible action to eliminate the following CCSD policy. That's Policy 216, Adult Education, and this is for possible action. I only have one question, and it was brought up last night. If this is eliminated, and someone wants to go find out about adult education, are they going to be able to navigate and find it in this buried somewhere else?
Well, the way I look at it is, Policy 509 is, has adult ed program in it, which is the title of Policy 216. And it actually has more information in it than the original policy did. So that's, that's my opinion.
So as we discussed, like a key word, adult education, we're going to go, is going to take us right to this policy, or not?
Yes. I would think if somebody looked up Policy 509 in the, online or in the manual, they would see adult education program in there under Policy 509. That would trigger them to go to this policy and find the information that they were looking for.
And then in the table of contents, under program, we thought we'd put a little reference to say, "Adult Ed Program, please see Policy 509."
Have a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the elimination of CCSD Policy 216, and approve February 24, 2015, as the eliminated date.
Motion? And a second. Any further discussion? Any discussion for the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Our consent agenda over time has evolved, based on different needs, changes in statute and interest from trustees. So the intent of this agenda tonight is to consider our current consent agenda and talk about ways that it serves our purposes, and see if there is discussion from trustees that would make it more applicable to our meetings. And so really, this was intended to allow trustees to talk about this in a general way and to provide us with some direction.
I think probably a lot of this stems from my questions. You know, in light of the fact that our Board of Supervisors doesn't do a consent agenda anymore, and we share the same constituency, at the very least, I think that our consent agenda, each time, should reflect only the items that we are going to be having in the consent agenda. So like every week, I have to look down the little cheat sheet that says which items, or go through there and find it. Instead of, like this week, we're not doing a bunch of the items, like a request for permission for student exemption. I don't see any reason that that should even be listed. I think it's misleading to the public that may want to read this, or may want to show up on these things. And I think it's pretty simple to just only list the things that we are going to do in the consent agenda.
Mr. Pavlakis, are there any legal requirements for, for any of these items?
The legal re-
The ratification for purchase orders and payables, the approval of board minutes, notification of budget transfers from the prior month. What wouldn't be, what wouldn't be required to be on the consent agenda, or even approved by the board?
I think that there are valid reasons for all of the items that are on the agenda to be presented. The requirement of the statute is that you give clear notice to the public of the matters that the board is going to be considering. My, I think what Trustee Green is saying is that by listing items that- My, I think what Trustee Green is saying is that by listing items that are not going to be considered, it's misleading to the public, that approval of sick leave, bank withdrawals is going to be considered tonight, when perhaps it's not. And so, from that perspective, I would agree that ideally, we would list only those items on the consent agenda that truly are going to be addressed at the particular meeting.
Steve?
Is there, is there ever a case where we have these consent agenda items agendized, but I guess what I'm saying is, do we need them agendized because we'll find out of a situation that we need to consent to after the agenda's been posted? And Renee, I guess that question is for you. Am I, it's probably too late for me to ask it any clearer, but I'll give you an example. We've got approval of, or request for permission for student exemption, number, item H. Do we ever, do we ever get that request for permission after we've posted the agenda?
That has come up from time to time, where I might bring a late item for a request, for approval for consent.
That's what I mean, that it, some, you know, we'll get, you'll get it two days before the meeting. Has that happened? Okay. I guess that's a reason to have it on there, so that, you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying, but I wonder if we're treading down the improper notice line, then, you know, there's a reason that it has to be out in a certain timeframe. So, can you just, if we didn't list it, then they wouldn't be able to attach it, but then couldn't I argue that we were sneaking something in that didn't get proper, what, properly disseminated to the public? That's where I find it misleading and deceptive.
Yeah, I don't know that it's fair to say that there's ever been any intent to mislead or be deceptive. But I, having said that, I can't say that you're wrong. I think that there are cutoff times for the agenda, and, you know, it may, if we follow what Trustee Green is proposing, and leave off requests for exemptions from vaccinations, it may result in someone not being able to make the cutoff time for a particular agenda, but then they'll have a chance for appearing on the agenda two weeks from now. I don't think that there's really an argument that it's deceptive to allow late entries, because on the agenda, as it's written, we don't identify by name the people that are going to be considered. So, again, I think there's a lot of history and tradition on why this is done. I think the primary reason, from my perspective, is that we have items A through L, and it would be easy, not with Renee, but it would be easy for someone new to her position to not pick up something, and it would be easy to miss. So, from that perspective, just as a matter of convenience to our recording secretary, in my view, that's why we have it the way we do. But ideally, you would only be listing the items that you're going to consider.
I have one more question. This is separate than what we were talking about leaving items. I think the leaving items off is just simple in my mind, but specifically, the approval of, like, FMLA and sick leave, did we ever find out, do we legally have to approve that? Because my understanding of, like, especially FMLA, I can't say no. So, why is it that I have to approve it? It's between the person, their doctor, to fill out that paperwork and submit it, and then that's that. That's my understanding of it.
I will have to look into whether or not there's some requirement that it be formally accepted by the governing body, but you're probably correct.
And, Mr. President, we also have some language in our contract that requires board action, but rather than listing it on a consent agenda, we would list it individually when those situations occur.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, then, Mike, you'll look into some of those concerns about, just from a legal perspective, would they have to be even listed on a consent agenda? I think that's the question, in each of these items. The approval of board minutes and all that, I think are, yeah, it's pretty standard, so... Just looking to those that are, are there a legal, is there a legal requirement for those to have board approval?
The one thing that, as you're looking at this, is I do want to, I guess with some of these, like, you've got approval of an employee leave request. I guess if it's an immediate request, you probably, perhaps, have already granted it, and we're just ratifying that decision when it comes in front of the board, whether it's consent agenda or not? Am I mistaken?
No, you're correct about that, Mr. Reynolds.
So, you're making the proper decisions to not inconvenience, or, you know, staff or anyone, and then come to some of the board.
When the baby's coming, the baby's coming.
So, my question to that, and what if I say, what if I vote no? What happens?
The baby's coming anyway.
Because there'd just be six yeses.
Right, so that's, exactly. So, that's, that's my point to all of this, is...
That's on anything.
No, but my point is, is I would rather leave the, I trust Mr. Stokes to run the day-to-day operations, and that should be what he does, and then we take care of things that are our responsibility. If it's not my responsibility to approve leave, then I don't see any reason for us to mess with it.
So, I'll just chime in, because I serve a board in my day job, and there are informational items that I put on the agenda, because I want my board to know, and I want them to be informed, and I want them to kind of have an idea of what's going on. I'm not necessarily required to. There's nothing they can do about it. We grant something, but I want them to know, here's what we grant, and here's who we've granted, here's the list. I agree with Ryan that I don't think we should have the things on the agenda that we aren't going to actually take action on, because it's just confusing. If you're a person in the, I mean, if you're a person in the public who's reading our consent agenda, and you, you know, I guess I just, it just would be clearer, more, more easy to understand, and, you know, so, but the other issue is, so, I don't know, I guess my concern of taking things off the consent agenda, whether they, or off the agenda at all, whether or not we can do anything about it if it's happened after the fact, is that, you know, we do have a pretty long history of having all these things on the agenda, and I would just be concerned of, to the extent anybody is looking at that, at the public perception, is that, well, they used to have these things on the agenda, and now they don't have them on the agenda, so are they trying to do something secret, or? And I, yeah, I wouldn't want that to be taken, you know? And so, I guess, to the extent that we don't have the authority to either approve or disapprove, then maybe we would consider just moving those to informational items, like I do with my board. Just a thought.
You have your directions. Okay, any...
Just a thought that came up. Did we, as a board, take action to endorse the Invest pamphlet? Isn't that with the state superintendent's, this NAS?
Invest is definitely a NAS publication, but I think that a copy was given to NASB for review and consideration, but I don't know if, I don't think, well, I know, our board never said we endorsed that.
That's what I thought, that just came up in the NASB teleconference, because NASB was approving it, and then they were asking if the individual boards approved it.
And I don't know if that's exactly true, because I remember we had a small format of it. We didn't have the actual document, but we, it seems like it was during the summer, June or sometimes, that it was brought to us as a board, for all of us to get on board, so that the superintendents could keep going with it. But I think it was sometime in the summer, that it was a conceptual thing, more than anything than the actual document. But it seemed, and then we went back to NASB and said, "The Carson City School Board accepted Invest 15." And then, I think, it got more documented after that, but I think in concept, I think if we look back at the minutes in June or July, it was one of those short meetings in June or July that we had it. That's why I remember it. Just kidding.
Maybe we'll look into that and put it on the next agenda, then, you know, did we, I remember getting the formal publication that you handed out, but I don't think, I don't remember any board action.
Well, we're going to be discussing a letter about whether we support the governor's proposal anyways, so just us, Invest in on top of that, along with it.
Are we on future, or are we going to do? Yeah, we do.
Okay, a motion on approving the consent agenda.
Sure, I'll do it. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items A, D, F, J, and K as submitted.
Second.
Yeah, I wouldn't, like, if we could add a discussion, or, I guess, two parts, a discussion, I know, so we do the S back in the map testing, but I don't want to confuse, I want to, if you guys could give us a presentation on the NAEP testing, and then we had a parent earlier this, or last week, whenever it was, bring up some of the demographic questions that their child was asked during, during that test. I would like personally to know the exact questions, the socioeconomic questions that were asked, because it was a math test. And then, also, I think we need to have a serious discussion on our opt-out policy, or the way we disseminate to the parents, exactly those type of things. Because most parents, I think probably all of us up here, would be like, sign our kids up for every test, because it's going to make them better, we want them assessed and stuff. But at the end of the day, I'd feel a little duped if that test was asking me some questions about my home life, or asking my child questions about my home life. I think those questions, we should leave to the parents to answer, and not the children, without the parents being there, because, you know, in the adult world, when you're asked any demographic, any socioeconomic questions of yourself, you always have the option to say no. It's never a requirement. So, to do it of a child in a testing environment, I think is out of line. So, I think we could utilize a discussion on those types of questions, and then probably a lot of information on what the NAEP testing is.
And Richard, you talked about having, you know, one meeting with all the testing requirements, and I know Ryan would like that as separate, you know, of the questions that are, the child has to answer, or is asked to answer. I don't know if we could do both in one session, but he brings up some valid points, you know, when, it's one thing for an adult to answer the questions, but then a child is not going to know that they have the opportunity to opt out, or, do they? So, and those are, so we can put that on the agenda, and let's get it out and talk about it. If we have to get somebody here from the Department of Ed, that would be nice also.
So, as we kind of move into the season that we're going to be moving into, which is getting ready for next year in the kind of hiring thing, I would like to maybe have a presentation from Jose, or whoever you deem, about, you know, what's the process, what are, what are some of our challenges, what strategies do we employ to overcome those challenges, and what we're, what cutting-edge techniques we're using to get the best and brightest people to Carson City?
Create agenda items for the next meeting.
And it doesn't have to be in the same meeting where we talk about the testing, because we need to be done earlier than 10.
Any further agenda, future agenda items? Not this meeting is adjourned.